Good afternoon. I'd like to call the March 18th, 2014 city council meeting to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco. Hart. Hodgkiss. Mario. Rouse. White. Mayor Schneider.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment. I have a number of speaker slips here and have two minutes at the podium. And I'd like to welcome our new city attorney, Ariel Colon, who's here for the first time, his first meeting. Welcome. He just started yesterday, so welcome aboard. I'm going to start first with Sandra Nash, to be followed by Steve Reynolds. Good afternoon.
Another beautiful day in paradise. I live on a little private road called Stevens Road, and I have some of my neighbors here with me as well. This is a little road that backs up onto the back of the Muni golf course, specifically more the driving range. And we have a major concern because when and if it ever rains, all of our great deal of the water that falls on the golf course is directed down the maintenance road that goes behind our property and the actual driving range. And all that water is funneled through a piece of property on Stevens Road, and it completely floods and destroys our little private lane. And I know that this has been brought up before in previous council meetings, and it was suggested that, well, this is God's rain. We can't do anything about it. We've been doing this for years. It's okay. You guys just deal with it. But last winter, we had the road graded, spent $900 to grade it. It rained that next weekend, and there went our road because of all of the water that comes off of the municipal golf course. I have a couple of maps, if you'd like to see them.
Hand that to the clerk right here. Thank you.
This is a photo of the maintenance road where there's a little drainage from the -- there's a berm of soil. It's about 30 feet high. The water runs down that berm onto the drainage road, the maintenance road, and then down into this little culvert, which then drains through. I'm sorry. Okay. Here's a picture after this last rain, and you can see it wasn't even raining at that point. Okay. Thank you.
Steve Reynolds will be followed by Clint Ohr.
Good afternoon, council members, Madam Mayor. I just spent a five-day, productive day stay in our county jail. I was there for sleeping at a church. That's legal lodging at the house of God in the eyes of the City of Santa Barbara. Like I said, it was a productive stay. While I was there, I got to witness the treatment of, let's say, our multiple offenders of drunken disorderly conduct on State Street. And you'd be surprised how these Henri aggressive pen handlers turn into sniveling babies soon as the jail cell doors open. What surprised me the most was the medical and the deputies' treatment of these multiple offenders. I found that while they have numerous tickets, they're only serving 10 hours, as opposed to serving five days for sleeping. They're given narcotics. They're told to take a nap, and they're woke up the next day, kicked out the door with the same filthy clothes, basically until they get their next drunk-on and they're ready for another Valium. So I was just going to suggest today, I heard the chief was supposed to be here to give his report, I thought, well, maybe the police officers should just carry the Valium with them, and, you know, the jail is pretty filthy. In fact, the grease stains are so bad on the walls of the jail cells that the sheriff just had them painted a darker shade of blue at shoulder height. I mean, it's ridiculous. The inmates are becoming more organized. They're doing more of the cleaning, but, like me, they don't want to put up with these belligerent people who don't care, so it's quite a mess there.
Thank you very much.
But they're working on it. Thank you.
Clint Ohr will be followed by Brandon Morse.
Mayor Schneider, council members. My name is Clint Ohr. And as I shook Congressman Rohrbacher's hand, we came before last at the funeral for the gal who founded the Surf Museum in Huntington Beach. I remember it's been 15 years since I first started looking to build the Huntington Beach International Surf Museum by the pier as a nonprofit entity. And it's been 10 years since I've been working on the Golden Bear, the West Coast destination of rock and roll. It's been 20 since I've been working on reviving country music and dance in Southern California. It's been a full 20 years. Santa Barbara is an entertainment mecca with vast resources. Yet again, where would you go dancing tonight? And the answer is, you wouldn't. There's no habitat. This is an issue with broad social repercussions. How do we fight obesity? Twinkies in a bowling alley? Where do people go? How do we get our kids and grandkids off of cell phones and into habitat where they can actually socialize? One that promotes family values and social etiquette. Why can't a guy lead and a gal follow? You know, what's wrong with that process? Is that okay? At least on a dance floor, you know? How do we invite Spanish-speaking folks to participate in America's music and dance instead of just the German polka thing? That's confused me for a while. I'm hoping that we can actually assimilate them to America's music and dancing through habitat such as the airport honky-tonk. I think it's time for action, and that resources need to be allocated to it.
If you could wind up, please.
A serious look. I have a document that I'd like you folks to take a look at, and we'll talk about it another time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Brandon Morse will be followed by Phil Walker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. Today is fairly much a one-year anniversary from the first time that I came here, and I spoke on the issue of the gang injunction. And to me, anniversaries are very relevant. And the one thing that I think that is most relevant about the last year is the volume of information that I've been able to accumulate on this one particular issue and the civil rights ramifications that have came about, as well as the shift in consciousness across the board. Our community, our state, and our nation is starting to become more liberty-minded once again. We were born out of individual liberties, and we, as a party for the Republicans, were based off of physical conservancy and limited government. I would like to say that it's been over a year, and I've been continually speaking out against this gang injunction. And it's very interesting, because we say that we are one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all, and that our rights are delineated from God, not from the city council. So whenever we're trying to say that there are individuals that are sleeping at a church trying to ask for sanctuary for the night, and they go to jail for that, or if a person walks down the street, which is God-given right to travel, especially in the community that you reside in, but the city council believes that they can somehow regulate or limit that whenever they're not doing anything else wrong, I think that there's something wrong with that. I think that there's something inherently wrong with the idea that the city council or a majority of the city council believes that they have the power and authority to do that. One thing I would like to show, I think this is kind of part of the whole Providence thing, can you imagine these being circled around the gang injunction zone? Can you imagine what it's going to be for the travelers and for the people that own properties to have these signs saying, hey, you're now in a gang zone where it's so dangerous that you could get robbed or shot for walking down the street? That's what the city council is saying, and I don't believe that that's true. Thank you.
Phil Walker will be followed by Bill Martin, and the final speaker will be Donald Cobb.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Excuse me, it was very windy and dry last night, and I got a bit of a frog. I'll bring this back next week for the fences, hedges, and walls community meeting. This is the proposed ordinance that I'm sure became an ordinance, City of Santa Monica, Fall 2008. You know, it's great. Okay, they got four proposals. Grandparent existing nonconforming fences, walls, and hedges that have been properly registered, and maybe we do need to register. Clarify established criteria for the repair and replacement of registered nonconforming fences, walls, and hedges. To establish administrative and discretionary height modification procedures, that's great. To require the maintenance of hedges and specify a self-help remedy for trimming overhanging edges. So I'll bring it back next week. Thank you.
Bill Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Schneider, and council members. My name's Bill Martin.
I'm going to put that mic right down to you, so that way everyone can hear you.
Does it go this low?
There you go. Yep, yep, bring it all the way down. There you go.
My name is Bill Martin. I'm a resident of Stevens Road. It's off of Kai Real, near Apple Grove and Peach Grove, if you're not remember by the car dealerships. My wife and I, Marilyn, have lived on Stevens Road since the mid-'60s. Our daughter, who's 50 something, was born on Stevens Road. We've watched a lot of children grow up on Stevens Road, but, and we've loved Stevens Road. We have our neighbors come and our friends come and say, it's a beautiful place to live. And we don't want any of you to visit us, because it's, the road is terrible. It's just, it's just an eyesore. And it's caused by the water that goes down Stevens Road from San Rokey Gardens, which actually is above the golf course. But it goes down their drains, through the golf course, out onto Stevens Road. It's been called a natural flow. Well, that isn't what the Lord meant, because he didn't put in the driving range. Mid-'60s, the water went down the road, it was just a mere trickle. It wasn't bad at all. It was evaporated and collected on the golf course. Now, the golf course in the '70s and '80s has built it so that it comes out of a pipe down Stevens Road, onto their maintenance road and down Stevens Road. It's like as if I had my hose, my garden hose, over the fence in your yard. You wouldn't like that. That's what we're just saying. We've been here before. I think Mr. Hart was on the council at that time. Mary Miller came by and visited us when she was a council member. And she looked at the evidence, and she said, honestly, I would just put up a big wall, keep the water from coming down Stevens Road. It's not that simple. But I would like to have somebody come and look at it again and see if there's anything that could be done, at least by repairing the road after it's damaged. Thank you, folks, and thank you for Santa Barbara.
Thank you. And Donald Cobb will be the final speaker.
Madam Mayor, city council members, thank you. This is about the 30th year that I've been before the city council. I also live on Stevens Road, next door to Mr. Martin and Ms. Nash. Basically, we have a problem there. We've always had a problem with the driving range. In the beginning, 30 years ago, it was golf balls coming over the fence and landing in our backyards. Well, we complained about that. We complained, and then we complained, and finally, we got something done. Now, it's not perfect. I could still give you a couple of golf balls if you need them, but it has improved. And that's what we're looking for here. I'm not asking you to solve the problem. I'm not asking you to wall off the golf course, prevent any water from coming through. Some water is okay. Water runs. Water runs where water runs. We can't do anything about that. But I would like the city council to take the responsibility to say, there is something that needs to be done here. What needs to be done? We need to get some kind of way of taking the water off of the golf course and getting it down to the city drain system. It's in place. We have a great way of disposing of the water, except it runs down the middle of a dirt road. Now, if you run down the middle of a dirt road, and let's get some pictures, well, we've got pictures here of what the water looks like. It's pretty big. We call it Stevens Creek when it starts to rain. This is destroying our cars. This is destroying our environment. This is not a good thing, and we would certainly like you to take some responsibility, to find some small way of fixing a problem that gets started at the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Armstrong, first we've, I think, heard of it, and I know it's golf course issue, get a follow-up, and I think that area is also in the county, so there's multi-jurisdictions here. If we could get an update at some point, that would be great.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, that's it for public comment. I'll conclude public comment, move on to the consent calendar. You have some items to read.
Item number three, initiate local coastal program, LCP, update, including recommendation A, that council hold a public hearing and adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara initiating a local coastal program update. And item five, adoption of ordinance for a lease agreement with Shoreline Beach Cafe, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a 10-year lease agreement with two five-year options dated as of March 18th, 2014, with Kevin Boss, D. Marsh Beach Rock Incorporated and California Corporation, doing business as Shoreline Beach Cafe at an average initial base rent of $14,342.06 per month allocated seasonally for the 5,095 square foot restaurant located at 801 Shoreline Drive effective April 17th, 2014.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Item three, as was mentioned, the initiating the local coastal program update. I have an item here that Mr. Gregory Smith just wanted me to hand over to the clerk, but do we have any other speaker slips on this item?
No, we don't, but I do have a couple of letters that we'll also hand over to the clerk.
Okay. So we just want to open and then close the public hearing, having no speaker slips on item number three. Is there any other items needed to be taken off the consent calendar, or is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Consent calendar.
Okay. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. We will then move on to item number seven.
Item seven, Mission Canyon Community Plan, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the Mission Canyon Community Plan for the unincorporated Mission Canyon area, repealing council resolution number 84-159 regarding the Mission Canyon specific plan and making environmental findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you, Ms. Brook.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. The slide in before you today is consideration of the Mission Canyon Community Plan. Shown here is a rough vicinity map of where Mission Canyon area is within the boundaries of the City of Santa Barbara. It's an unincorporated area in the county that abuts the city jurisdiction. It's approximately 1,100 acres, primarily residential in nature with a couple institutional uses, including a county fire station, Rocky Nook Park, and the Botanic Garden. Prior to the early 1980s, all the properties within the Mission Canyon area were on onsite wastewater treatment systems. In the early '80s, there were many septic systems failing in the Mission Canyon area. And as a result of that, the county was asked to address the issue by the Regional Water Quality Control Board and approached the city in requesting to extend the El Estero wastewater treatment plant services up in two portions of Mission Canyon area. The city was concerned that extending the sewer service to that area could induce additional residential growth, so as a result of that, the city and the county entered into a joint powers agreement in 1984 that addressed the collection, treating, and disposing of wastewater from Mission Canyon. Also, in the JPA, required the creation of a specific plan to guide the future growth and development of the Mission Canyon area, and also a stipulation that any amendment to that specific plan would require a joint city council review and approval process. And that's the reason for us being before you today. When the county began to consider updating the 1984 specific plan, it was determined that a community plan would better serve the needs for future growth and development in Mission Canyon area. And so the county set down the process to develop a community plan for the area. Key components within the Mission Canyon Community Plan, one major component of utmost interest to the city is that it manages growth. There's no land use or zoning changes proposed within the planned area. Also, there's goals, policies, and development standards that help to improve parking and pedestrian and bicycle circulation, a balance of fuel management, that's fire, fire issues, with sensitive biological resources. It seeks to improve public health and safety. It plans for future disasters, places an importance on protecting neighborhood character and enhancing visual resources. City staff and the planning commission and council have been involved throughout the development of the Mission Canyon Community Plan. The most recent effort in that joint work effort was a joint city and council, city and county planning commission hearing in November 21st of last year. At that joint meeting, the city planning commission recommended that the city council approve the Mission Canyon Community Plan and make the necessary findings to do so. There's a couple step process involved in doing this. After that joint planning commission hearing, the final EIR and the community plan, as well as some other county adopting ordinances, went to the Board of Supervisors, where they did final, or they did certify the final EIR in February, and this action before the city council is one of two last steps required before the community plan can be adopted into the county's general plan. Throughout our coordinated effort, the city's main policies of interest in reviewing the community plan have to do with water conservation, wastewater collection, fire protection, and resource protection. In terms of water conservation, there are policies in the plan that require that new or expanded water service connections must meet the city's water conservation standards, being that we do provide water to the entire Mission Canyon area. Also, that city's city water resources staff will review landscape plans as part of issuing water service letters. In terms of wastewater, with there being no expansion or increased density within the Mission Canyon area, El Estero has adequate capacity to continue serving the portion of the planned area that it does serve for wastewater collection. Also, for fire protection, the county has incorporated a defensible space standards for development in the area, as well as development standards to incrementally widen the substandard driveways and streets in the area that could make, for better ingress and egress, should there be an emergency in the area. In the, in terms of resource protection, there are policies that address stormwater management and runoff to prevent erosion, and also treat the volume and quantity of stormwater that runs off of properties in the area. As I mentioned, there's a final EIR for the Mission Canyon Community Plan, which is also for the council's consideration. It did identify that there would be four issue areas where there'd be significant unavoidable impacts or Class 1 impacts. The county is the lead agency for the environmental review, and the Board of Supervisors did certify the EIR on February 18th and adopted a statement of overriding considerations for those Class 1 impacts. The city is the responsible agency for environmental review and must consider the final EIR and make the necessary SEQA findings in the resolution as part of taking action on the community plan. With that, staff's recommendation is that city council adopt a resolution approving the Mission Canyon Community Plan, repealing the council resolution number 84-159, which created the Mission Canyon specific plan zoning designation, and making the environmental findings in the resolution pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section 15091. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, as well as the project planner for the county, Rosie Deistee is here as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The EIR document, or the summary said that public views were an issue, public views of the mountains and the ocean. So what, what happens up there that threatens that? And then I also had, I'll just tell my questions while you're getting ready. There was a reference to, in terms of fire and rebuilding, rapid recovery versus resistant to future disaster. I guess you could do it fast, or you could do it so that it's safe for the future. And then, so there was a reduced build-out alternative, but that's not going to be used anymore? Okay, so those, those are my questions. And then, what about a traffic signal at Mission Canyon Road and Mountain Drive? That kind of had my interest, too.
Make sure the green light's on there, press the button. There you go.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and members of council. Okay, I'll address those questions one by one. So the first one was, could you remind me again while I was getting my stuff?
The public views?
Oh, yes.
That seemed really high on the list of the PAC.
Oh, okay. Public views would be from, you know, public roads, parks, a Botanic Garden, areas like that. There was no significant impacts, we found, to public views. It was just something we noted as potentially being impacted, let's say, if people built two-story homes and things like that. There was also a concern, I recall when we were in our coordination with the city, that views of Mission Canyon from the city was also something just to keep into consideration. And we felt that the, we also, as part of this project, there's new residential design guidelines that offer a lot of guidance for new homes and how they're going to look, and the height, and that sort of thing. So I, we didn't really have any significant impacts to public views, but it was something we considered. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. And it's nice to see you, Ms. Deistee.
Thank you.
So then, there was a concern about building too quickly after a fire, rapid recovery.
Oh, okay. I think what you're referring to might be, there's a balance post a fire, and I mean a fire that doesn't just burn one home, but many homes, between rapid rebuilding, which everyone wants. We want people to get back into their homes quickly, but without taking into consideration maybe some work to widen the roads or other, to address the more longer-seated problems. The community members often used, as an example, in the Oakland Hills, when they had their firestorm, there was a rapid rebuilding in the same place generally, without doing anything to retrofit the existing roads or even some of the landscaping. So there's a balance here we're trying to achieve of, of course, wanting people to get back into their homes as quickly as possible, but doing what we can post any sort of disaster to address some of the longstanding, mostly circulation issues, narrow roads and those sort of things.
And Mission Canyon has that.
Well, it's, it's a future action item of the plan to do a post-disaster reconstruction plan. So it actually hasn't been done yet, because it would need approval and funding from the Board of Supervisors to do that plan. It's been in our work program for long-range planning, but it would require, you know, allocation of funding and staff to work on it.
So the plan, the new plan replaces the reduced build-out alternative? That was a set of actions that was in place, but...
Actually, no. What, what that was, was as part of our environmental impact report, we looked at alternatives, and one was to reduce build-out by either, I believe it was changing zoning or doing a slope density formula. And we looked at both of those options and decided that the project itself, which meant no land use or zoning changes, was, was superior. So the reduced build-out was not adopted as one of the alternatives.
Okay. And, and do we think a traffic signal is needed at Mission Canyon Road and Mountain Drive?
Oh, okay. So that came about, there was a traffic study done as part of the environmental review, and they found in the future, with full build-out of the canyon and also regional traffic growth, that intersection could be impacted. And it would mean that people queuing up on Mountain Drive would have a hard time getting out onto Mission Canyon Road. So one of the, well, the mitigation measure that was suggested that would resolve that would be to put a traffic would be to put a traffic signal in. But traffic signals are not compatible with our community plan, where we, basically, that would be the last option people would want in this area, because it's semi-rural. It's not, we don't have traffic signals anywhere else in Mission Canyon. So, the mitigation right now is to continue monitoring that intersection, and if it does start to reach to a trouble level, there would be a study done where we would see if a traffic signal is warranted. So, it's not an automatic going-to-happen situation. It's something that we're going to monitor and see what happens.
Okay. I read through that kind of fast this morning.
Okay.
So, maybe it was just a discussion, not really a proposal.
Yeah.
How about the extension of Holly Road to San Roque Road? Is that something that people are working on and want to have happen, or is that just an idea on increasing circulation up there?
I think that's sort of an, I don't want to say informal, but it's something that has been discussed, especially among the Mission Canyon Association, as a secondary way out of the canyon in a disaster. Actually implementing it is pretty complicated. It's, there's a lot of private property. It goes from county to city. I believe there's already a dirt road there that people know how to use if they had to in an emergency, but it's not official, it's not an official evacuation route. To make it official, it would have to meet certain standards. So, it's something I know the Mission Canyon Association has been speaking about for years, but there's no formal action to open it up at this time.
Okay. Those were my questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the summary, there's allusion to providing space for more emergency turnout zones. Could you describe more specifically what that would look like?
Okay.
Or that would occur?
Yeah, that was, once again, one of the mitigation measures we developed, because there's a Class 1 impacts for fire hazards. And the idea was, as road projects are completed in that area, to evaluate the roads and see if there's any space where you could have, it might be a turnout zone that would fit maybe one vehicle. The thought was, is if a lot of people are trying to get out of the canyon, and maybe a vehicle breaks down or something, there's a way to push that vehicle off the road, and it can get out of the way. And/or, just a regular car can get out of the way and let emergency vehicles go by. That's as far as it's been taken. There's no designs yet or thoughts where these would go. It's just a, almost like a future wish list of maybe on Foothill Road or Mission Canyon Road, there'd be spaces for, to allow this to happen. A lot of, the problem with Mission Canyon is it's mostly all built out. All the roads are already there. It's a matter of trying to retrofit when we can.
No specifics on that?
Nothing specific right now, no.
A placeholder kind of thing?
Yes.
All right. And then, to our own staff, I would ask this kind of lob, this softball, and that is, what did city staff learn from the Mission Canyon Plan that might be applicable or useful for the city of Santa Barbara? Was there any policy or strategies that were things that we might want to be looking at? Obviously, this is one of those urban wild and hotspots, so I'm curious to hear that.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmember White. The city departments that coordinated with the county on this project included our Creeks' and Water Quality Division within Parks and Recreation. And there was quite a bit of discussion about the, you know, foothill areas and the recommendations that our Creeks' Division has, and then county policies. And so, there was a good exchange of information in that area. I think we were generally more of the mindset of giving information rather than learning and leaning as much. But I do believe that exchanges in all sectors were beneficial. The county also had a discussion with the Single Family Design Board. And as Ms. Deist just mentioned, the consideration of slope density and hillside design standards, that's an area that we were able to share information. The overlap interest in the Mission Canyon Historic District and Safe Passage Proposal, that's something that we are, both agencies are actively working on together. So, that certainly emerged through the plan and through the community as something of joint mutual interest. Again, I think in the area of landscaping, water conservation, there's a lot of overlap, but I don't really recall a lot of discussions where we said, "Oh, we're going to take this idea of something that's happening in the county and apply it in the city." At this time, nothing is really coming to mind. It really was more, as we were advising and realizing, that they established an entire MIC PAC, as it was called, and had a lot of moving parts, and we just provided input mostly.
Thank you. And then, on the safe passage aspect, were there any, was there any specific progress in that area? Were, was there a start of any? I mean, I know this is a very broad, complicated problem or situation. Were there any specifics that started to emerge out of this plan that would contribute to the safe passage piece?
Mayor Schneider and councilmembers, that's a great question. And we actually, specifically, out of this plan, there was an action item to coordinate with the city, and we've been working with the concerned citizens for safe passage. And the county got a grant to start doing concept-level plans for that corridor. So, it's from Laguna and Los Olivos at the Mission, all the way up to Foothill Road. And our main goal is to improve safety and pedestrian and bicyclist passage through that corridor. So, we have already started that effort, and it's truly a joint effort. I'm working with your city engineers and Transportation Division staff, calling them almost every week. And they're working with our county engineers and staff. Some of the grant money has actually been set aside in a contract for your city engineers, who are going to be doing the actual drafting of the concept-level plans. So, that's certainly ongoing. We had our first public meeting in October up at the Women's Club. We're planning our second public meeting. It's likely going to be in April, also at the Women's Club, and that's where we're going to roll out some concept-level plans for the community to start looking at. So, that's been one of the best things out of this community plan, has been the push to work on this project.
And perhaps our staff could alert us on that meeting. That would be an interesting one to attend. Thank you, and thank you for that.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I heard, among other things, a key thing that you said, which was to, it's a unique area, and your intent on maintaining the ambiance there. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. The semi-rural feeling of the area was something the community felt important to maintain, and some of the policies and standards are towards that aim.
Yeah, it's a very special neighborhood, for sure. There are a couple of private lanes there. How do we deal with those? I think Totos Santos and Glendisere are both private, are they not?
Correct. Those are both private lanes. In what sense, deal with them?
Well, does whatever we decide, or whatever you eventually decide, also govern those?
Oh, okay. No, we're, private roads, we generally don't have any plans for this time. They, you know, they're under their own standards, and the Fire Department actually sets in the county the standards for private roads. So, there are considerations, both those lanes you mentioned tee right into Mission Canyon Road.
Right.
And some people have mentioned site distance issues. So, we're looking at that, but that's about as far as we'll get.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, we have a speaker slip here for this item. Lisa Burns, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Members of the council, good afternoon. I'm delighted to be here. I applaud the process relative to Councilmember White's comment about the collaborative process. This is a result of all good things happening, particularly about this tricky little bit of land between the old Mission and the Natural History Museum. As you know, it's very complicated for tourists, locals, bicyclists, children on field trips. I'm a docent at the old Mission, and I know there are a lot of field trips where the kids go. Half of them go to the Natural History Museum, half of them switch, and they go back and forth. Very tricky to cross three roads as directed right now. This is what Safe Passage is all about, and this Safe Passage group all came out of a mitigation measure in this process. I think it's a wonderful story. It came up in a public hearing before the Planning Commission on approval of the project for, I believe, three or four years ago. Can't remember, something like that. Anyway, so, circulation measure MC 3.1, a collaborative effort to improve multimodal connections along East Los Olivo Street in the city and Mission Canyon Road in the county. That's what this is all about. And I have to say that this collaborative effort now involves 20 stakeholders, neighborhood groups, private property owners, nonprofit institutions, plus city and county representatives. The goal is to provide a safe route for pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as reducing vehicle trips along the narrow section of roadways in the area of Mission Creek Bridge and Mountain Drive near Almeida Padre Sara. That pinch point, it's between two major regional destinations. Recognizing that Safe Passage is a regional concern, not just a local concern, Caltrans awarded the city and county a grant to engage local residents in finding solutions. This is what we talked about, meetings coming up sometime in April. If people would like to attend to here and help find these solutions, I think you can Google Santa Barbara County Planning and Development, Mission Canyon, and you'll see a click on to get on the mailing list. And we just want to thank city and county staff, because they've listened to our concerns, and they responded, and now we have a really good project that'll, I'm sure, be a wonderful legacy project for the mayor and city council. Thank you.
I don't have any other speaker slips. I see a number of people in the area. Now's your chance, if you wanted to speak on this item. Okay, so, I'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to council. I just want to say upfront, I appreciate our own Planning Commission and planning staff working with the county planning department and their commission. It's a great collaborative effort, it seems like, here. So, I just want to express that appreciation. To the council, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I want to acknowledge the residents of Mission Canyon who stepped up to craft this plan. It's many years in the making, and of course, with county planning staff's support for openers, and then, of course, the city staff participating as well. So, I just, the fact that we don't have a host of neighbors here who are concerned about it and are thinking that this is going to ruin things, is, as we know, sometimes it's the quieter a hearing is, the more successful the process has been. This is something like seven years in the making, and as I say, I applaud them. I want to particularly call out Dr. Ray Smith, who chaired the effort and is one of those wonderful, stable leaders and hard workers who digs in and does the hard work. So, I commend them, and at the right time, I appreciate the opportunity to make the motion to approve.
Why don't you go right ahead, and Mr. Rouse will speak after you.
Okay. Then, I would move that the council adopt, by reading of title only, the resolution in the city of Santa Barbara to approve the Mission Canyon Community, Mission Canyon-specific Plan, and making the appropriate environmental findings.
Second.
And I know there was a corrected version of the resolution in front, so that we're referring to that corrected version. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, having participated in some of the Safe Passages meetings, I realize what a daunting task that is, and can't just imagine out of pocket what that's going to look like. At the end, our friend Callum de Forest mentioned that they started chatting about that in 1947, so it's a process. A quick question for staff over. Is there a part of this, a piece of this, of public transit? I mean, obviously, it's hard to plan that far in the future and what we're doing, but is there a part of that, is part of the imagination of what we're going to do with moving people from point A to point B?
Yes, Councilmember Russ. We do know, we are going to speak to MTD about the process. There has been concern about the location of the, line 22 is the only bus that goes through there right now, and we have initiated those conversations about increasing or more public transit in the area. I just don't know at this time. We'd have to talk to them. I know line 22 is very low ridership, so it might be a challenge, but it's something we'd want to at least consider.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While people are tuned into this discussion, I just wanted to let people know that I understand the Museum of Natural History is looking at retooling its plans for that property. So, people should stay tuned for that. And I am usually someone who is open to the idea of, you know, second units where they work. I understand this area will be limiting that, and that does make sense in terms of fire danger. And I'm glad that the city is cooperating with the county, and I guess the national forest is up there, too. In terms of cooperating with fire planning, it's so important, and I'm glad we're working on that. But that also leads me to the subject of, I think there's a little bit of dysfunction here, why the city hasn't annexed Mission Canyon. And when you look at the map, it, we surround it, and so, it just, to me, I'm just going to make the statement that it seems like good government that Mission Canyon should be part of the city. But I understand people, people don't want that, and I certainly wouldn't push that. But I'm keeping my eye on it, because I want to do what makes sense, you know, for people and the environment. And I'm ready to support this. I'm just noting that we should probably annex that, that property, and that's my opinion. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I also just want to appreciate the discussions, constant discussions about fire preparedness and doing what we can to prevent wildfires from spreading, because they don't care if it's in the city or the county. And then, more particularly, "they," the fire, if it's a "they." And more particularly recently, about water conservation as well, especially since later on today, we're talking about an update about our drought-one condition. So, that, that community and collaborative regional effort is always very helpful. So, I want to thank all the residents involved who are part of this discussion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item number eight.
Item eight, Police Department Update.
Great. Chief, whenever you're ready.
I've just been told to hold on. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. We're going to give you an update today. Deputy's chief is here to talk about some items as well during our PowerPoint, but we wanted to start with our Part 1 crimes for January and February of 2014. It has changed dramatically in terms of it decreasing. If you look at the bottom part of the PowerPoint, February in 2013, we'll go down to the total Part Ones. Again, these are burglaries, robberies, murders, attempted murders, sexual assaults, and I believe, and robberies. If you notice the numbers, they have decreased for a lot of reasons. Great police work and great community involvement in terms of our Citizens Academies, our Neighborhood Watch, but mostly just some fine police work that has led us to many arrests of individuals who have been violent, who have burglarized our homes and businesses, and that's why you see the decrease. Unless you have a specific question, there are the numbers. Just want to give you an idea that February of 2013, we had 30 aggravated assaults, and in February of this year, 14. And it just continues to go down in number and percentages, and we're very proud of that.
Chief, I got a question if I could.
Yes, sir.
Aggravated assault in January. What happened in January? We were way up.
We were way up. That was prior to several big arrests that we made. As you know, in January, we had, December, January, we had some stabbings and other assaults, some gang-related, most of them not, domestic violence and all of those issues. So, January of this year, we were very high that month. It was extremely high. But again, arrests were made. February looked very good, and we're very proud of that. But that's, January was extremely busy for us.
Thank you.
There's no questions on this sheet. We can come back to it. We'll go right...
Sorry, Mr. Hart, I had a question.
I'm sorry.
Just quickly, what does BTFV mean?
Burglary Theft From Vehicle.
Thank you.
Thank you, great. Want to show some pin maps. This is what we go through in ComStat every month, and the deputy chief is going to talk... This is what we go through in ComStat every month, and the deputy chief is going to talk specifically on some other ComStat numbers for you and PowerPoints. This is what we look at every month. This is for February, and residential burglaries is what these are. The yellow are daytime burglaries, blue are nighttime, and the star indicates arrests. In some of the arrests, if you were to go back to the sheet, the PowerPoint before this, the slide before this, some of these burglars that we've arrested are suspects in more than one burglary. So that's why the numbers are up. Many times when the detectives do the arrests and we do the search warrants, we find items from various locations that were burglarized that we know about. But if you look at that, we had a very good month in February with the arrests. Again, several of these, if not most of these suspects arrested were involved in various burglaries, not just the one that you see on the star. And it just goes with great police work, fingerprint work, witnesses. We have a great relationship with the pawn shops who keep us informed of things coming in and out, which really lead us to a lot of successes. They really are unsung heroes. They really call us. We have a great relationship with them that really assists us in identifying property and giving them back to the victims. So we've been very fortunate in that regard.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss had a question.
Yes, sir.
Chief, what's the profile, if there is a typical one, of people committing burglaries? Are they local people? Are they out of town? What?
In the last year to 18 months, it's really been 50/50. About a year ago, most of our burglaries were being committed by outside, outside county people from Los Angeles, Bakersfield, San Francisco, Oakland, which are crews that travel up and down the state and do these burglaries. And those were our biggest issues about a year to 18 months ago. If you recall, about a year ago, maybe a little longer, we did arrest a crew from Los Angeles. They were also attached to a crew from Bakersfield of about 10 to 12 people who were committing major burglaries, residential and business burglaries. So it's really, it's kind of a mixed bag.
And age-wise?
I don't have that statistic, but...
It's generally a young man's profession, is it not?
It usually is. And most of our suspects, if I think back, probably 25 and over. We have a few burglars that are juveniles, but those are burglaries, as Councilman Hart mentioned, from motor vehicles. And most of the burglaries from motor vehicles are, the cars are being left open, keys are in the car, and those things. Most of our residential burglaries in the daytime are open doors, open windows, open garage doors. That's what those are.
Okay, thank you.
Our commercial burglaries, if you notice, we did make one arrest. This is probably the lightest in terms of numbers of commercial burglaries in probably two to three years. This was really a problem because of several arrests two or three months ago. The burglaries, in terms of our commercial burglaries, went down tremendously. We still have the daytime ones. Again, businesses, back doors being left open. Very few of these burglaries are kicking the windows in, kicking the doors down. They really are. And we continue to do public service announcements to our community and our business community to really be aware of the doors. It's that simple. But probably a great success story in terms of commercial burglaries, and we're very proud of that. We had two arrests, one way up on top of the city there that you can see, and then the one downtown. The one downtown, that was an individual who had more than one burglary attached to him.
Excuse me, quick question. The one way up in the north part of the city, there's nothing industrial or commercial up there, really. It's all residences. Why is this a commercial burglary?
That's a good question. Could have been a construction site, something like that.
Or somebody working out of their home?
Or somebody working out of their home is probably why it's designated as that. But I'll find out, because that's a great question. The vehicle burglaries, again, you saw the numbers on the second slide. Again, nighttime burglaries of vehicles. 75% of those blue dots that you see there, vehicles left open or keys in the car, not even breaking of windows. So, you know, there are opportunists out there, and they're, your car's open, they're going to go in. And we had the one arrest, and that was attached just to that one daytime vehicle burglary. But looking good, looking good compared to the last two or three months. Robberies, we made one arrest, but this, again, went tremendously down. Again, the reason, two, three months ago, 60, 90 days ago, we made some great arrests of individuals who robbed other individuals, and we made some, some great strides in that. You heard of one of my officers that we'll talk about in a little bit, who caught the bank robber, and so that was outstanding work as well. Again, not a lot to say, except it's good work, and crime is down in terms of robbery, and crime is down, Part One crime in the city in a tremendous way, and we're very proud of that. Changing gears, and we're going to get back to statistics, but I didn't want to give them all to you immediately. Wanted to share some things about our explorer posts. Our young people who are part of our explorer posts volunteered just in February, the group of 25. It was really a little over 320 hours of volunteer time for us. Part of that is translations, and of course, we have certified most of our Spanish-speaking explorers to come in even when they're not working, to do some translating for our officers or assisting individuals who do not speak English, mostly Spanish, to help them and assist them in interpreting for officers' crime reports. And we're very proud of these young people for doing that. The third bullet point, recently held the Second Annual Innuo Festival fundraiser. Some of you were there. It was a great success. Again, this is part of their fundraising efforts, and the community just, again, for the second year in a row, was just overwhelming, the support that the young people received. And with some of these funds, they go to different events and competitions against other police departments and sheriff's departments. Many of our young people, I should say, several of our young people, believe it or not, are in transition housing. They're doing great work. We have a couple of young people there who do not have a home and basically are homeless, but they're in that picture. They're getting As and Bs in school, and it's not an excuse for them to get involved in violence or any other things, and they're leaders in this group of people. Many of these young people really don't want to be officers. They want to be doctors, lawyers, teachers. This is not a program to do early recruitment for police officers. It's to enhance their education, their citizenship, and their community service. Next one, please. Recently, we, the Police Activities League hired Sarah Spataro, whom many of you know from Special Olympics. She's hit the ground running. She's doing some great work. But we wanted to share some things with you that are going on right now. Boy soccer season just ended. It was eight weeks long. We had seven, 70 middle-aged schoolboys participated. About half of those, it was the first time to participate in a official team sport, and they were fun to watch and gained a lot from it. Our boys' basketball is underway, and we have teams in Santa Barbara, Galita, and Carpinteria. At our recent teen center activities, they continue to do the hip-hop dance, CrossFit, guitar, body, and you see the litany of programs there. And a big one that we're really on with a lot of our juniors and some of our seniors, but mostly juniors in high school, is how to apply for scholarships to college. And that's become sort of the staple of the teen center, to get some of these young people some help in obtaining college education. On April 25th is the 11th Annual Pudding Kids First Event. It's going to be at the History Museum, so we encourage you to attend. We've sent out, I'm sorry? I'm sorry, Carriage Museum this year, thank you. It's at the Carriage Museum. Most of you, if not all of you, have received the save the date. This is a program where the kids just take over the entire program and share with you what their lives are now because of the Police Activities League. So we're looking forward to that again this year. It's always packed, it's always sold out, so I would suggest you get your tickets early. As you know, we measure, we measure what we do every day of the week. Once a month, we gather all my supervisors and managers and others to discuss how we're doing in terms of crime, strategies to address crime and attack crime. And the deputy chief and I run the ComStat, mostly the deputy chief now, and we wanted to share with you some of the new slides that you will be getting via email and what we're going to be discussing in ComStat to make it a little bit friendlier and more usable. These statistics are also shown to the rest of the employees at the different briefings to see how they're doing and how they're doing in their beats in terms of crime. So it's not only just a way to measure what we do, it's also a way to applaud the efforts of the officers. As an example, the sheets that we showed earlier with the crime being down in those beats that you saw. So I'm going to let the deputy chief take over for a few slides and introduce you to some of the new look that you're going to be seeing in the ComStat process.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. As the chief alluded to, we are in the process of rolling out a new format for ComStat, and we just wanted to brief council about what the changes are because it's really going to look like an entirely different document to you. So what we're going to do is take you through what we currently have, or what is now the old style of ComStat, and I think many of you would recognize a graph like this. It shows our call for service volume, and it gives, it gives you information that you have to study there a little bit. Sometimes it can be a little confusing to see exactly which year we're talking about. We might have to reference up here a little too much. And we tried to make the new slide, which we'll see right here, just a little more intuitive. There's also a lot more information contained in this single page. So I'll start with this, with this graph right here. This graph represents the call for service volume by year. So this will have the yearly totals from 2009 through 2013. And as you can see, we had a little dip in call volume, a little spike, but in 2012, we were at 39,113, and in 2013, at end of year, it was 38,168. So a little drop in overall call for service volume, which is obviously very obvious from the graph. On this next chart, right over here, it's call volume by year-to-date. So where this is an end-of-year total over here, in this graph, what we see is as of February. So as of February 2009 through February 2014, what is our call for service volume? And once again, you can see, there's been a little, little drop over the last few years in our call for service volume.
Quick question if I could. Have our standards for putting some, a call in to this graph changed at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Have not. What we see right here is kind of the data entry chart where we enter some of the data. This will have all of the Januaries through 2009 through 2014, likewise, February. And then if I can call your attention to this yellow bar, it's the year-to-date, which is represented over in this chart right here. But also, this gray bar at the bottom contains some interesting information because this is your monthly average from 2009 through 2013. So it's a good reference point to help you understand, for example, is 2757 a high month or not? And when we look compared to the monthly average, we can see it's actually a little, a little below average. And then on the second half of the gray bar, it contains our yearly average. So when we're looking at the yearly total for 2013, we can take a quick look, what's been the average over the last five years, and it'll just give you a good reference point to help you understand the relevance of that number. And then finally, the slide at the bottom, it's, it's kind of a composite of the upper two. We just graphed the call volume, and you will notice that 2014 will always be a thicker blue line to help you differentiate from all the other lines because it can get a little confusing. So we've increased the thickness of the current line, which is being shown every, every ComStat reporting period, and it'll be a little easier to follow that way, I do believe. So let's just take you through a couple more examples of these, and then I'll turn it back over to the chief. This is the old style once again. This is our on-view activity for our police officers who are conducting enforcement in the field. This is a new version of that, so you can quickly tell for the last three years, we've had a pretty good increase in the amount of officer activity in terms of their initiating call activity in the field. It's pretty flat if you look at the year-to-date overall. Once again, this column is represented by this blue bar right here, represents that, I'm sorry, that yellow bar. And you have your monthly average and your yearly average. And then finally, you have the, the chart at the bottom, which shows the last two months relative to all the other months that are plotted up here over the last five years. So it really gives you a lot of data, a lot of information to help you assess what the trends are. This is the old style for our Priority One, Call For Service. This style represented not only the queue time, which is how long the call for service was being held in the dispatch center, but also the, the upper line, which is a composite of the queue time plus the driving time, which we like to think of as a customer service response time. In other words, when someone calls 911, how long does it take a police officer to show up at their doorstep? And this is represented by this line up here. This is the old style. The new style, it's beginning to look probably a little familiar to you already, but once again, you have the monthly average. So we can quickly look at the monthly average for the last five years, compare it to last month of 5.6, and we can see that last month was a good month. If we look our year-to-date response time, we see that we're trending in a good direction. Our year-to-date is 5.3, and that's the quickest response time we've had in any time in the last five years.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
I appreciate the graphics, but I'm trying to figure how we can make use of this. For instance, you got a spike of something there in the middle, that green line that goes up. Do we have any idea what causes this? So if we go back two slides, we had a peak in, God, I'm sorry, I'm getting used to this new style here, but at one point, we had a peak in the month, the one that says on-view activity by month 2009 to 2014. Can we draw conclusions from this? Do we know we changed our tactics here? How do we look at this to make it really useful?
Well, this one, we always know that Fiesta causes a spike in officer on-view activity.
I'm familiar with Fiesta, yes.
So, and then also, you'll just see a general increase during the summer months. So the days are longer, generally speaking, when the days are warmer, people consume a little more alcohol, and whenever alcohol is consumed, police are soon to follow. So, you know, we just see this trend, and as a matter of fact, you would see it on the previous trend right here on our total call for service volume. You get this peak during the summer months. So we analyze this data to address our deployment strategies. Another thing that we do when response time escalates, we consider moving resources out of some of the specialties into patrol because we know from experience that generally speaking, the response time is a function of the queue time, how long it's being held in dispatch. The only time dispatch would hold a Priority One call for service is because there's no one available to immediately dispatch that call into the field. And when those calls aren't being available to be serviced, it's generally a function of how many officers you have in the field. Now, on any given day, you can always be overwhelmed by, you know, just a very busy day. And then we look at things like pulling motor officers, and we'll, you know, tell them, don't do motor enforcement, handle this call for service. So we always have this kind of extra-layered responsibility, response to the call ability, not responsibility.
And when we have a medical call, do police necessarily respond to that as well as fire and AMR?
That's correct.
So is that a situation where we could perhaps not respond with police, since you already got medics?
I wouldn't recommend it because generally speaking, we're always able to promptly respond to our Priority One calls for service. And as we see here, last month was the fastest response we've had in the last five, five years. So we're, we're trending in the right direction, and I would actually recommend that we keep that level of service to the public.
So when we go on a medical call as police, do we, I mean, what do you really do? Is it?
Well, you could have a man suddenly down with a heart attack.
Yes.
Or you could have someone in a cafe having a, you know, a aspirated food.
Right.
And anyone who's been trained in emergency first aid procedures could be of assistance in those calls, and sometimes police officers, you know, they're right across the street on those things.
Right.
So it's important to get the first responder there as quick as we can in cases like that.
Yeah, agreed. But once we do that and followed up by AMR, can we release police then, get them back on the street?
Correct. We're not the primary caregiver in those.
I'll add that, you know, we assist fire with traffic issues at a scene. The firefighters are there, and the medical people are there for one thing and one thing only. And sometimes when there's a crowd, even the family of the person that needs help, we need to assist with that. The firefighters and the medical people really have no time to do that. So I believe it's a great partnership, and I don't think we should stop doing that.
I wasn't suggesting stopping it, but I'm glad to hear that Jeff Manix said that, yes, if possible, we pull them off. yes, if possible, we pull them off if they're not needed there.
Well, they're pulled off as soon as possible.
Makes sense. Okay, thanks.
So yes, we'll move on to the next slide. This is the old style, which was actually one of the more frustrating charts for me to view in ComStat. The reason why is you have a value up here, December 2012, compared to December 2013 for your various Part One crimes. And, you know, that's relevant, but I want to know on a real, clear, objective way, is crime trending up or trending down? And I want to know, is it trending up for this month and also, how does it compare to last year? So we've taken this information and we've broken it down into two separate slides. The first slide is going to be this blue highlighted area, which I'm going to show you in a moment, which is our violent crime. And then our second slide is the yellow highlighted, which is the property crime. And I haven't shown you all the slides that we've done. This is just to give you a sampling, but every one of these crimes is broken out into an individual slide, which I don't have for you today. But this is something, what the new style is going to look like. Once again, it's very easy to take a look at some of these things and recognize the trends. We have seen a little ongoing increase in violent crime over the last three years. This is primarily due to increases in aggravated assaults, which are your felony assaults, assaults with the deadly weapon, things like that. This is your year-to-date for February, so we seem to be trending about the same as we were for 2013. So far, February is doing pretty well. Actually, February was very well. We had violent crime of 22 and if we compare that to our average, we can see that's 35. So right away, we're able to make use of some of this data. Another example from this same slide is property crime. There we go. So with property crime, we can see that the first two months of this year are very, very good because we look at values of 150 and 164. We compare that to the five-year average of 236. This is easily seen in our year-to-date chart right here, easily seen that we're doing very well. Also, we can tell that 2013 was a much better year than 2012. As a matter of fact, it was one of the best years we've had in the last five years. And then another way to easily see this trend is to simply look at this line right here. Generally speaking, in crime volume, you know, lower graph lines are good lines. And then what you'll notice is it drops down to zero for the rest of the year because there's no data for March on. So this is just a few examples of some of the information we have. We hope you find it's easier to read. We tried to make it so the information was very intuitive and you didn't have to glean out a lot of information, it just spoke right to you. And that concludes my presentation on the ComStat review. Are there any questions? Perfect, thank you.
Pardon me, I'm late off the mark. I do have a question. Maybe chief, it's best for you to answer this. Do we have any way of comparing ourselves to other communities of similar size and nature? That may be an impossible thing to do, but I remember once we said, well, one unfortunate murderer year is not that unusual in a community of 90,000. It's kind of a strange way of saying it, but you understand what I'm saying.
Yes, there is a way to do that. It's very easy. In fact, the chief's conference two weeks ago, we did talk about sharing that type of information. Most departments, probably about a third of the police departments in the state are now doing some form of ComStat, so it'd be easily to do. We could do that if you'd like for the next update to show you what other cities about our size and population. I think that might be a good thing to look at.
I want to give you a lot of extra work here, but it might be kind of interesting, sort of.
No, no, I think it's very doable.
Okay.
If I could just add something. There are the uniform crime reports, which are sent to the FBI. Our agency reports them every year. Departments are not required to universally report those, but most departments do. However, when you go onto the FBI webpage, they'll tell you in big, broad, flashing letters, do not make crime comparisons from one jurisdiction to the next because there's different reporting practices from one department to a next, different levels of service. And in Santa Barbara, for example, people are accustomed to call the police department to report crime because we have a will respond policy. We don't mail a crime report out to someone and say, well, fill it out and mail it back. We will send a police officer. In communities that don't have that same level of service, they will naturally have lower reporting values. So it's a little tricky to compare yourself to other cities based upon just the reporting.
Yeah, I'm sure. There's a lot of variables. Thank you, I understand.
Part of our goals and objectives this year was to partner with the school district, and particularly the elementary schools, along with the Community Action Committee, to share and to talk about issues in the elementary schools before we get into the junior high and high school, issues of violence on school campuses. So about eight or nine months ago, we did form a great collaboration with the school district elementary school principals, CAC, and my BEAT coordinators, led by Sergeant Riley Harwood. And the reason for this strategy or collaboration is right there in those three bullet points that I think are pretty huge. And my BEAT coordinators are visiting schools every day of the week, a variety of schools. And basically, the philosophy is to discourage participation of elementary-age school youth and bullying and delinquency. We're meeting with parents, we're doing teacher trainings, and we're doing a lot of one-on-one with some elementary school students who are already at a very early age showing signs of bullying and other types of behavior that's unacceptable that in the junior high or high school, if we don't address it early, may be even more of an issue for us and lead to arrests, suspension from school and all those sorts of things. So my BEAT coordinators have been doing a great job, along with CAC, many of the parents that we speak to. And of course, the teachers and principals love us on the campuses every day, but we're really addressing the issue of bullying and other types of unacceptable behavior in these young people that could lead in the future to something much, much worse. The meeting with the classes and the parents and individual students has been a huge deal for CAC. We've been able to refer a lot of the parents and their families and the children to some other assistance in terms of this way of behaving. So we believe it's a great preventative medicine and it's very much appreciated by Dr. Cash and all his principals. Recently, the schools in the last month that have been visited are the Santa Barbara Community Academy, Notre Dame School, Adams, Cleveland, Franklin, Washington and Harding. And this is every single day of the week. And our presence on school campuses alone deters some things. But this is not an enforcement effort at all. This is a partnering with the school principals, literally reading to the kids, playing ball with the kids and building relationships early on, but talking seriously about the issue of bullying, which has been an issue in most schools in the country. And this is the way we're addressing it in Santa Barbara in collaboration with CAC and the school district. So I wanted to share that with you. We're going to continue to do that. We recently had our employee recognition dinner. Just wanted to share some of the all-star folks here. Austin Gutierrez to the left was Officer of the Year elected by his peers. Investigator of the Year was Gary Siegel. And the chief's meritorious awards were Dave Henderson for all of his work in the Detective Bureau as a supervisor. And Richard Washington, far to the right, is a motor officer who literally chased down the bank robber recently and tackled him in the middle of the street and recovered most of the several thousand dollars that he had. Officer Washington saw this individual who had completely changed his wardrobe, but the face was described pretty thoroughly, so we followed him for a while. And then the chase was on and Richard did a great job of using his foot speed to catch the bank robber, which is pretty cool and pretty huge. So we clearly, his peers definitely selected him as one of the chief's meritorious award winners. Supervisor of the Year, Sergeant Mike Brown. Reserve Officer of the Year, Mike Hernandez. And the Lieutenant Bond Award for Reserve Officer, that means most hours given to the department and to the city, was Andrew Barlow. We really recognize our civilian employees and our volunteers as our reserve officers are. They put on this badge and gun for no pay and work patrol and work all sorts of crazy hours because they want to give back to their community and they're certainly an asset to the organization. So we do recognize Michael and Andrew in that regard. And then the civilian employer of the year, again, selected by her peers, Kathy Chan has been with the department quite a few years. She puts ComStat together and other crime statistics for you and for me. And she's the one that does all the hard work. But we wanted to spend some, a couple of minutes today just to show you their picture. And then the next one, Citizen of the Year, Judy Lugo is with our Police Activities League. Judy has had an interesting life as a young person, involved in violence and other issues in her life. She was recruited to join PAL quite a few years ago when PAL first started. She was one of our first clients and she is now an employee for the Police Activities League and a heck of a mentor and role model for everyone, including the guys and the gals. So we wanted to recognize her and she was awarded the Citizen of the Year. Sergeant Dan McGrew. The 25 explorers gave Dan a special recognition for all of his assistance in helping the explorers in their program. And then last, but certainly not least, is Nicole Hall. Nicole Hall is our property officer. Nicole Hall has a great experience. She was a police officer back east. She's actually the daughter of my secretary and she is our property officer. The great use is that every year in California, of all the property officers in the state, one is selected as the property officer in the whole state, in the entire state. And this year, it's Nicole. And next month, we'll be traveling to San Diego to watch her get that award. It's a huge award because property and evidence are something that gets us in trouble if we don't do it right. And she does a great job and she was selected as the Property Officer of the Year in the entire state, so we're very proud of Nicole. As you know, I don't have a PowerPoint for a couple of things. As you know, we've been working diligently, 600 block of State Street and beyond. We have started, as I mentioned to you in my email a week or two ago and to Mr. Armstrong, the different strategies that we're using. I believe it's working. We put a three-week project together. We moved people around. We have people coming in later, some earlier, to address all the corridor, but specifically 600 block. And we've been very successful. And we're going to continue for the next two weeks, reevaluate it and see what else we can do with that area. Public Works has been a great partner in this and so have the businesses. I personally walked State Street last week, a couple of days, and met with many of the owners of the businesses who shared their frustration with me and had every right to share that frustration with me. And we're just as frustrated. So we're partnering up. We have some meetings later this week with the business community to deal with some of the issues on State Street. The biggest issue are our urban travelers with the pit bulls, who are basically strong-arming for money and really making some pretty bad comments, as were made to me today at lunch by one of them, in terms of the begging for money and all those sorts of things and bothering the tourists, leaning over people that are eating to ask them if they're done with their meal. And this is unacceptable. You know, we have our restorative policing. These individuals have nothing to do with restorative policing. These folks are not, to our best knowledge, mentally challenged, nor are they elderly. We're talking between 17 years old to early 30s. And it's been a big issue in front of the habit in other parts of 600 State Street and it's unacceptable. Now, we're doing this, obviously respecting everyone's civil rights and doing it accordingly and doing it appropriately and actually asking these folks if they need some help. And about 100% of them are reluctant to ask for help and certainly accept help from us. But they are creating an issue, so we're working with the businesses to try to make that better for everyone, especially the tourists and those that come downtown. So we're going to continue on this strategy. I wanted to share with you some statistics. We started this strategy on March 10th and from March 10th to March 16th, just in the 600 block of State Street, we wrote 151 citations, we made eight felony arrests and 13 misdemeanor arrests. All of these folks are the urban travelers. We did a survey, an unofficial, non-scientific survey, but I will tell you that over 90% are not from California. They're coming from all over the country. And so it's been an issue. On Friday morning at 5:00 or 5:30, I usually don't wake up that early, but 5:00 and 5:30, I went out with TPF, looking at the encampments around our city, especially those on the freeway on and off ramps. And you would not believe the sophistication of encampments that are there. We measured, we took a rough, unscientific statistic and at the end of Friday, over 85% of the individuals that are camping on those freeway on and off ramps are all the urban travelers. It's not the elderly folks that are homeless and it certainly is not the folks that my restorative policing folks deal with, which are the mentally ill, none of that. It was the same group that we had talked to all week long at the 600 block of State Street. So we're going to begin work with Public Works and the county in terms of, hopefully in the near future, returning to our strategy of cleaning up some of those encampments because they're living there and then when the sun comes up, they come right to State Street. Then at night, they go right back to their encampments. And the encampments are extremely unhealthy, they're extremely filthy, and if I had a stronger word than filthy, I would use it, with needles and other things that we don't need to get into. But needles everywhere and it's just unbelievable. It's unhealthy for them as well. And our community is at risk when you do that. So we're going to call, we're going to talk to county mental health and we're going to hopefully, in the near future, do some cleanup work. But we are addressing it. We're doing the best we can. And to do that, I've had to move people from one assignment to another, but we're okay with that. We have to put out the fires where the fires are and that's where the fire is. So we're going to continue to work hard on that and I know you appreciate what we do in that regard. That concludes my presentation. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Well, I just want to applaud the effort on the 600 block of State Street. Mr. Armstrong and I were down there last week having lunch and you were there, meeting with the business owners and talking with folks and encouraging your officers to continue their great work. It's obviously making a difference, as evidenced by the arrest statistics. You're exactly right, I think, to be going after the encampments of these folks. There's really no appropriate place for them on State Street with the behavior that they are doing on a daily basis. And I know that Councilmember Hodgkins is working with some of the business owners in the 900 block of State Street and has a meeting scheduled on Thursday to talk to them. I think you're probably going to get other inquiries from other business owners on State Street as a result of this extra effort on the 600 block. And, you know, I think that's going to present a challenge probably in the big picture, but it's, you're right, this is where the problem is. People are speaking to it clearly and loudly and you're responding very appropriately. And I just want to say thank you and appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, can I ask that this be posted online, your PowerPoint presentation? It wasn't included in our packet. Probably you're putting it together at the last minute so you have all the updated information. But the public might benefit from looking at it, especially the new ComStat presentation. And it is part of the public record, so it might be helpful for people. In terms of the street issues, I would just take this opportunity to remind people to be careful about giving change and money to panhandlers. And everyone has their own judgment about, you know, if they're going to do some street charity like that. But I think what we know is that if the panhandlers are rewarded, then they'll keep coming back. So I would toss that out there. And then chief, as somebody who has a pit bull and I'm a pit bull rescuer, I would just ask that you please be careful when you say the urban travelers and their pit bulls because I think there's a diversity of dogs out there and they're an incredibly gentle breed. And if you want to meet my pit bull, Roxy, you'll see that she's a really, really good dog. So I'm just a defender of pit bulls and I know the people out there have them, but I think the dogs are innocent in this case and I'm sticking up for them and I would just very gently ask you to be careful when you talk about the dogs. Because if you say pit bulls, then that perpetuates the- If, because if you say pit bulls, then that perpetuates the, the stereotype.
I was, I apologize if I insulted you. I didn't mean to do that.
No, no, not at all.
I love pit bulls also. I, I guess maybe I could have spoken a little bit more clearly. Yes, there are other dogs out there, but those are the ones that have caused us the most grief in the recent few weeks. But I probably could have worded it differently, and I will be careful of that.
I, I would appreciate that. And again, it's the people who make the dogs behave in a bad way. It's not the dogs. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick, quick comment on your school resource officers. I have spent some time talking to Officers Marshall Riz, and these people are incredibly passionate about what they do, and they really get to know the kids, and they're no longer just a badge or a face behind the badge, on a first-name basis, and, and they are really excited about what they're doing on campus. So that, it's really time well spent for our staff out there. And then I was speaking with both Adrian Gutierrez and Lojo over the holidays about the Franklin Community Center. And could you give us just a moment on that, Chief?
Oh, thank you.
And what your perspective is? They seemed like there was a great community response to that, and they were actually almost overwhelmed at how positive the response had been from some of the neighbors and families around.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much for mentioning that. The Franklin Center project, it's a pilot project to have an officer to Franklin Center, has been overwhelmingly successful, and most of it not having to do with crime at all, but with information that people are looking for. They feel comfortable going there. We have taken some police reports there, nothing that is life-threatening, but a lot of people curious about the immigration issues, whether the police department is involved in immigration. Many of them have been led to believe that we are. Adrian has done a great job on Spanish radio once a week. He's going to go to two days a week on the radio for an hour to discuss some of these concerns that our community is concerned about. We've had quite a few parents going there with the young people to join PAL. One actually went there and, I believe, joined our explorer group, I believe. But it's been an overwhelming success, and the partnership with Parks and Rec is great, and their employees refer or call us that there are people that are waiting for us to go address some of their concerns. So I think it's, the pilot program is working out so far, and we're, we're really glad to be there at the Franklin Center. Thank you for mentioning that.
Mr. Hodgkiss? Did you have your light, you had your light on? Do you have a question?
Couple of questions. Who's got jurisdiction on those freeway off-ramp locations?
It's a great question. It's usually Caltrans, and then on one side of the fence might be the railroad. And they've both been cooperative with us. They have a lot of road to cover, a lot more than we do. But in terms of the cleanup, even if it's on property, you know, we have to notice these folks when we clean up. We, we don't show up that day and take all their things. That would be completely inappropriate.
How do you notice?
We literally with a piece of paper, and we go visit them, and we say, in the next, in 72 hours, we're going to come and we're going to clean up, and here's your notice. And...
Do they generally get up, pick up, pack up, and leave at that point?
Most of them, most of them do, but we still have to go in there and clean it. Again, we're talking about used needles and those things that can end up in a child's hand, just over the side of the fence. So it's a thorough cleanup. It's a thorough cleanup, but they do get about 72 hours' notice before we go and clean it up.
How often do we do that now?
We haven't done it in over a year, but that's why with the city administrator's direction, we're moving with Public Works to begin that, that process once again.
Any feel for the numbers of people we're talking about?
No.
50, 20, 70, 100?
70, maybe, that we know of. We haven't found all the encampments.
Actually, the number looks lower to me, but I don't know.
It's more, and I found that out firsthand last week. It's, there's a lot of people out there.
And do they get free meals during the day other than panhandling?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
Might be good to know that. How many encampments do you think we have?
I don't know how many we have. I went to five within a three-hour period that had at least a dozen folks in it that we could find.
And all the urban travelers you're describing?
Most of them.
Minus the dogs?
Most of them.
Okay.
Most of them were the urban, urban traveler folks, yes.
We got an email from the owner of Dargans today thanking you and the city for the efforts. You know, they've got that one place right down from the Habit that was sort of a, right near the parking lot there, that's been a collection spot. Apparently that's better, but this isn't going to go away. We have to keep constant effort.
This is, this is everyone's issue, and, and we need to, we need to stay on top of it, and that's the, that's the goal of the department.
Are you allowed to just ask somebody, can I see your identification?
Yeah, it depends, but you know, people have every right to sit on our benches and walk on our streets. I think our issue and our responses are to complaints of either smoking in front of the business, strong-arming people for money, leaving their property all over the city street, which they cannot do. They can't even display their wares. If they're making trinkets or paintings, they cannot lay them on the ground and...
So I, I see that a lot, and no action being taken. If I'm a citizen walking down the street and seeing that, what is my recourse?
Well, you can call us, and we, we go there, and again, we're not going to take it from them. This is their property. They're not, you know, they're not committing a felony where we're going to arrest them, but we are going to warn them. I think what we're doing and the manner in which we're doing it, I think, is respectful.
Well, what do we warn them? Say, oh, you're not supposed to do, what do you say?
We do that.
Get a ticket?
Well, yeah. And sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't. And most of the time, over 90% of the time, they pick up their gear and move on. Do they come back the next day? Probably. But this is a revolving door sort of thing, but at the same time, people have a right to sit on our benches and walk down our street. I think the department's goal is to keep everyone safe. A lot of our businesses are concerned with their employees' after-hours, where we have had issues with some of these folks addressing aggressively some of the employees of the businesses. They're concerned about that. And I think it's, it's really an obligation of not just the city, but also of the businesses to help us with this. And I've made, my staff and I have made some, I think, pretty great suggestions for some of the businesses to all, to take it over as well, to help us with this issue. And it could be a variety of things.
Right.
And there, and we're, we're going to have a meeting this week with about 50, I believe, more business people, or 20. It is, it's part of what we do, and I think every businessperson and resident tourist deserves to walk down State Street and feel safe.
Can, can a business owner now call you and say, hey, I'd like you to come out, take a look at my place, and give me suggestions about how, what I might move or what I might do to make my place less attractive?
Well, they don't ever say less attractive, but...
No, attractive to the wrong element.
Oh, yes, they've been calling us quite frequently, especially in the last week since we started our, our enforcement efforts and our enhancing of resources. And we're doing it. And we have our beat coordinators. We have Officer Butel, who really is the owner of State Street, as far as I'm concerned. They love her. She's doing a great job. It's not going to be perfect, and we're not going to be able to address 100% of the issue, but we're going to continue to give us our best effort.
Let me ask our new city attorney, because I know you've had experience with this in your Ventura. Can somebody be asked to show their ID if they're a vagrant or whatever, or have things out for display on the sidewalk? What, what are the police privileges and the police limitations?
Basically, there needs to be some cause to make a detention and have that kind of interaction with the person.
So it has to be a criminal cause?
Some, some cause.
Well, what, that's pretty vague. Can you be a little bit more?
It is pretty vague.
Are you being intentionally vague?
I am. I am. I don't know that it goes as far as probable cause, but there has to be some cause to make that kind of interaction.
So if somebody was obviously a vagrant here, sitting on the sidewalk, which is not allowed, is that a sufficient cause?
Yes.
Okay? And if they have stuff out for display and a little sign that says, make a donation, is that a sufficient cause?
Well, I defer to the chief, but if it's a code violation, yes.
It is a code violation.
Yes.
I'd like to get more familiar with those code violations, and maybe that could be part of our meeting on Thursday. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, we have three public comment speakers, Brandon Morse, Kathy Swift, and Keith Terry, if you want to come on up.
I would really like to thank the chief and the opportunity to speak today. This was a great presentation, and there was a few things that I really would like to come back and highlight. The first thing is that crime is significantly down, or at least it's on the decline. Please correct me if I'm wrong. It's been on the decline for a while now. Without the need of the gang injunction, it went to good police work, and it went to interactions with the businesses and our police officers without needing to waste the $1 million or however much money we have on this gang injunction. It's awesome. The other thing that he highlighted is that gangs aren't the number-one issue that we have to deal with. The number-one issue that we have to deal with, according to the chief, is aggressive panhandlers. Now, I like this. I like this because I actually have worked on this in a much bigger city that has a much worse problem with aggressive panhandlers. That's the city of Fresno. We went into Fresno with a huge encampment. I can send you guys the videos and all the articles. We worked on these people, and we started with one thing, ICE. We went to water. We went to powdered Gatorade. We went to hygienic products. We registered these people to vote, and we gave them the power to do what no one else could, go out and find a job. They started in tents, they went to the shelters, and then they went to their own apartments. We did this for about a year and a half. We provided porter potties. We provided dumpsters. We provided sanitation items for the women to make sure that there was a basic level of humanity for these people to live with. Now, obviously, we don't want the government to step in. My Republican counterparts, I would say, would not want the government to step in. What we need to do is that we need to go in and work with the nonprofits, work with the businesses, and say, this can be done without some sort of injunction or without violating people's rights. People have a right to walk on the sidewalk. They have a right to sit on the benches, and we really need to reevaluate our priorities here as a community. We really do. This is possible. We can do this. This is something that I've done before. Let's do it.
Kathy Swift?
Well, I guess I would just start out by kind of pointing out the obvious, and Brandon already touched on this already, and that is that if crimes are down, why do we need a gang injunction? The gang injunction seems like it's going to be overkill. It's going to severely eliminate, basically, the civil rights of the Latino community. And if crime is down, why do we need this? And another point that he made was that he said that he attributes this to the work of the police department, but, you know, I would just point out that correlation doesn't always show causation. There could be other factors that could see the reduction in crime around the city, things like maybe better employment, maybe families are working together, or community organizations that are working with youth or with people around the city. These could also be factors in reducing crime, so it's not necessarily just the police department that can take responsibility for this. There's other factors that need to be considered, more humanitarian factors, I think. But another thing about the, the whole gang injunction thing is that I just feel like the lack of clarity and the criteria for identifying a gang member is really problematic, because it really does come down to racial profiling then. You're basically targeting the Latino community, and this is unfortunate because you're violating their civil rights, and you can't do that to people. That's a lack of constitutional rights, and we still have a constitution in the United States. This idea that you're going to make the East Side and the West Side safer, I think that's really just grandstanding, because basically you're going to further divide the community and cause more problems by making the community more mistrustful of the police, because the statistics show that when you put a gang injunction into place, you actually increase the rate of police violence against the people there. And this has been demonstrated around California recently with the recent shooting in Anaheim, in Oxnard, in Santa Rosa. There was just a case recently with Manuel Diaz in Anaheim. His family's wrongful death lawsuit against the city police department there was dismissed, basically with the idea that because he was a gang member, he deserved it, even though he hadn't done anything wrong. And this is the same thing that happens in Oxnard, which also has a gang injunction...
Find out, please.
And that also is seeing increased rates of violence against the Latino community there. So this is a problem, and we don't want that here.
Keith Terry, and then the final speaker will be JP Herrera.
Madam Mayor, City Council. From what I understand, the majority of the city council is looking forward to having this gang injunction go through. And in the three years that we fought against it and tirelessly tried to inform people how bad it is, it seems that the majority still rules. So I've come to the understanding that perhaps we should stop fighting the majority and go along with the majority. Perhaps we should agree with the city council, the police department, the DA's office, and the city attorney, and we should all embrace this gang injunction. And I think you've already seen this sign, but wouldn't it be great to have a sign posted on the perimeter so all tourists, our home, our home buyers, and everyone can know that they're entering a gang injunction zone? You know, and throughout the zone, the residents individually and collectively and in concert vandalize public and private property, that they trespass, they loiter, they sell and use narcotics, that unlawful drinking on sidewalks and streets and parking lots and apartment complexes and public parks. Shouldn't our tourists and our homeowners know that it's a criminal nuisance and that the behavior is injurious to the health and the decent offensive of the senses? The point I'm trying to make is, if we do go through with this gang injunction, it's going to be much worse than you anticipate, because once 1,500 of these signs are posted around the city, and every tourist sees them as they walk into the supposed safety zones, once another 1,500 of signs saying danger, you are now in a gang injunction zone are posted, it's going to make a real news headline, and then it'll be all over the news about how dangerous it is to be in Santa Barbara, and that's really not the case. You heard it yourselves. It's not the case. It's not that bad here. Let's not make it worse. Thank you.
JP Herrera will be the final speaker.
Thank you for allowing me to talk. I'm the director of Palabra, and I want to touch into the subject like most of these people here were talking about on classifying gang members and what it takes to actually make a young man a gang member. I've been in court where I've heard detectives, law enforcement, talk about kids that have no previous criminal records, no previous gang enhancements, no cases at all whatsoever, and they're not even documented in pictures with other known gang members. And at the end of those trials, the DA will always make these young men register as gang members. I've heard law enforcement talk about that it's their job to build cases around these individuals, and I think it's really unfair for the rest of the community to really, really understand how law enforcement is making more gang members in Santa Barbara than the actual gangs. How is it that the DA and law enforcement collects information on these individuals and later on makes them register, which later on makes them get violated for stupid petty stuff like this gang injunction? I myself am frustrated at the fact that one of the young men that actually helped out Santa Barbara to minimize violence in Santa Barbara was Raymond Macias, and now he finds himself in county jail on bogus charges, conspiracy charges, and he's being held in isolation without access to his legal mail, without access to seeing his family, and without even anybody really presenting a case against this particular individual. I know that there's a lot of other young men in the community that have done the same work as Raymond, and in the last two or three years, I can honestly say that not thanks to law enforcement, not thanks to anybody else, it's been the community, the gangs themselves who have minimized the violence in Santa Barbara because there were a lot to come together, and yet we find a lot of these young men incarcerated because of that, under conspiracy charges. Thank you.
Okay, that...
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Herrera.
Herrera, Mr. Herrera, if you can come on back.
And I, I want to say, first of all, I appreciate that usually you cede your time to others who are, who are speaking against the gang injunction. I appreciate you speaking directly to us today.
Thank you.
Could you just call out a program or two, not 10, but one or two, that you, of the city programs that you think have been the most effective, and that as we're, we're sort of, we're entering a, a phase of budget work now, but a program or two that you know that have been the most effective that you think should be highlighted?
Oh, man. You're asking me to cut out a lot of the great works, the nonprofits around town?
Just, just to give a top, couple of, of top examples of John.
Well, I would say Primo was one of them. Wise Tribe was another one. Those are the two that basically, that I see myself as, I would support. You know, Wise Tribe being the one who really deals with the kids in school and actually trying to get them employment and get them prepared for the, for the real world. Primo was pretty much always trying to keep the kids occupied and, you know, keep them interested in other activities, get them tired... interested in other activities, get them tired out so they're not really wasting their time on the streets, but...
Okay.
Those are two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the council. If there are any other final questions or comments for the chief? I think we had a lot of questions and comments. Thank you very much. We look forward to your next session when you come back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to move on to item number nine.
Item nine, stage one drought update.
Thank you, Mr. Hagmark, whenever you're ready.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Joshua Hagmark. I'm the Acton Water Resources Manager, and I'm here today to give you an update on our current drought situation. My presentation today is approximately 30 minutes, depending on how many questions we get. And just an overview of what we're going over today, the current drought situation. We're looking at our supplies, looking at water purchases and where we're currently standing with water purchases, drought response capital projects, the financial impacts of the drought, and conservation efforts. Some of this is, we've went over before, but last year was the driest year on record. That says a lot when it's 94 years of records. Having said that, we're rolling right into the third driest year on record currently, unless we get some significant rain. So in February, which is unprecedented, and that's typically our wettest month, we declared a stage one drought. The last rain, which was significant, however, the watershed was so dry going into that rain that unfortunately we saw very little benefit, long-term benefit from that. At Gibraltar, we received 8.3 inches, and I think it says a lot to get 8.3 inches from a rain event and bring us up to the third driest year on record. Because the rain came down so intensely, we did capture 1,500 acre feet at Gibraltar. Unfortunately, most of it was silt-laden, which is going to be, which means it's going to be several months before we can bring that water down. Lake Kachuma also got 1,500 acre feet, and downtown Santa Barbara got about 5.6 inches. I think the biggest thing to come out of this rain event was, I'm hoping, people turned off their sprinklers for at least a couple of weeks. I know it's been warm, but that rain was pretty significant, and we did get some good I wish I had better news. NOAA is still predicting precipitation to be below average for the next three months, although there is talk about a possible El Nino for next year. What that means, we don't know at this point. This is a slide I think the council is very familiar with. This was the basis of our droughts planning coming into this drought. We have been preparing, I think, since the '90s for the next drought, and it has been based on the driest five years on record, which occurred between 1947 and 1952. Why I included this graph is to show that during that time period, there was still inflow, rainfall, that amounted to inflow into our reservoirs, and I think that's significant because what we're now faced with is very little to no inflow, which has been very challenging. And I think we've went back and we have reworked all of our strategy for our supplies, and we've basically made the assumption, worst-case assumption, that we will not see any more inflow into our reservoirs, and we will not be getting any state water anytime soon. And so with that, we are currently in year three, 2014. We have adequate supplies for this year, but we are asking for a 20% reduction in water usage because of the impacts that can have on future years going forward. Next year, the graph here shows a 5% reduction, and the challenge with that is the orange or peach-colored bar there is water purchases. It is dependent on us being able to purchase water. This is a somewhat new field in California, and as we've, I'll be talking about later in my presentation, the price of water is going up quickly. And so next year's shortfall could be much bigger. The other point I wanted to make with this graph, I've kind of changed from the past, is pointing out conservation as a water supply. The red there is what I'm calling extraordinary conservation. It's going above and beyond what we normally ask our community to do, and it is in itself our cheapest water supply. The cheapest way to approach a drought is through conservation. Of course, we're not putting all of our eggs in that basket. We have a diverse portfolio, and we are planning for the worst, but if there's anybody who wants to do everything they can, it starts at home, it starts with conservation. So this is our current supply strategy, and what I wanted to do is just kind of show the benefits of conservation. If the community gets behind conserving this year, it really helps to lessen how much water we need to purchase in upcoming years. And as we, you will talk about later, the water, cost of water is going up quickly throughout the state, and so it offsets those costs which will ultimately be passed on to the ratepayers. If we can't find that water, then we must conserve. I included this graph to kind of help out, help to understand what happens if we don't find any water to purchase. We also, if you want to call that the absolute worst, it's no reservoir inflows, no state water, and no water purchases. And what that looks like, and we'll be talking about desal a little later in the presentation, it means bringing desal on in year five. And basically, what we're doing is going to be using up more of our Kachuma water earlier and relying heavily on our groundwater supplies. So where are we today? We currently, as we declared the stage one drought in February, the state went into a drought declaration in January, and we have seen a reduction in water usage, which is great, but as the graph kind of tells here, the green line is what we had forecasted. So what people have gone, done so far is brought their water uses down to what we had forecasted it being without a drought. What we're looking for in that blue line is to actually bring water usage down 20% from that forecasted. And so over the next two months, we should be able to tell in May somewhat definitively whether the community is responding to this request to reduce their water consumption. I think it'll be helpful for our discussion as we go along if I just talk a little bit about the value of water as it stands outside of a drought, what we're kind of talking about. So surface water from Kachuma and Gibraltar treated water is about $300 an acre foot. Well water ranges, it depends on if the quality of the well. We have a few wells where we can go directly into the system. That water costs about $110 an acre foot, and then we have a lot of wells in the downtown that have to go into our Ortega groundwater treatment plant. Those costs are upwards of $800 an acre foot. The recycled water is about $1,100 an acre foot. It's actually, during a non-drought time, it is some of the city's most expensive water. However, it is also the cheapest alternative water supply when you're looking at other alternatives for water. So the recycled water, and then I put in here desal, just, this is the cost that we currently have from our 2009 study. It's about $1,500 an acre foot, and that's just for the operational costs at this point. That does not include the capital cost to build the facility because we currently do not have an operational facility. Water purchases. As many of you've heard, the state water allocation has been reduced to zero. Well, what is that? The city is a participant in the state water system. As part of that participation, we get about 3,000 acre feet a year. That 3,000 acre feet has been reduced to zero. And so with that, we're looking to try and, in order to keep extending our local supplies, we are looking to purchase water. How do we purchase that water? We purchase it through CCWA. That's our Central Coast Water Authority. They're our member agency in the state water system, and so we're working closely with them, and we're looking for about 4,500 acre feet. That's what we came to council in February requesting about $3.3 million to go and pursue the purchasing of water. Historical costs, because aside from the purchase cost, once you purchase that water, depending on where it's at, it's approximately $500 an acre foot to have it delivered here through the state water system. So currently, we're looking at year four, and right now, that's our unsecured water that we're trying to find. There are two types of water, really two breakpoints. There is South Delta water, and there is North Delta water, and I'll talk a little about the two different sources. South Delta water is a more secure source of water. However, with that security and delivery, the price is a lot higher. Buena Vista, which is located in Kern County, had some water for sale in the first part of February. The bids came in on that, and the high bid went for $1,350 an acre foot. One month later, in March, the price of water has jumped up already to $2,200 an acre foot, almost a 50% increase. What the city did make a, what we thought was a very aggressive offer on this water, and unfortunately, we're unsuccessful in getting it. North Delta water, everything north of the delta. The challenge with that is getting the water through the delta. The price point for that is between $500 and $600 an acre foot, and there are several groups of farmers up there who are looking to unload some significant amount of water if they can get it through the delta. The time to put in your order for that water is coming up quickly in April, and we plan through CCWA to pursue that water. Some of the uncertainties are the losses. Typically, depending on the flows in the delta, they will establish a loss, which means that we have to give so much to the fish or to the environment when you put water through the delta, so that'll be part of the negotiations of that contract and our contract price. You know, we may buy 4,500 acre feet, we may have to buy more than 4,500 acre feet in order to get 4,500 acre feet through the delta. So there's four main categories of drought response capital projects. Just wanted to go over some of these. They're, some of them are significant in costs, but they all kind of are contributing to our diverse portfolio. So we start with recycled water. As many of you know, our recycled water system, our recycled water filtration plant is about 20 years old. It was installed after the last drought and has, we've been planning for the last four years to replace that facility. It's rather complex in the sense that it was tied to with our secondary treatment. We were trying to figure out, because part of the process is, you know, our wastewater comes in, it goes through a primary treatment, takes out a certain level of sediment, then it goes through secondary treatment, and then from there, it goes into our tertiary filters. Well, if you do the upgrades to the secondary, that certainly lowers the impacts to your tertiary filters. However, we're working simultaneously on both of those projects. The secondary work is about a $20 million project. It's fairly significant. And so about three years ago, we made the decision to move both of those projects along in parallel, and we just assumed that the tertiary project would just need to clean up the current, the current secondary water, which is pretty difficult to treat. So that project is moving forward. Fortunately, we received bids and had to reject bids because we had a protest, and there were some legal issues with moving forward. So that is going out to bid again, and we'll be back before you may for award. That project is approximately $9 million. It's a pretty significant project. Right now, if the project is awarded in May, we're looking at a summer 2015, we'll be back in production. The capacity of the plant is about 1,400 acre feet a year. It's roughly 10% of our entire city's water demands, and our current demand on the recycled system is about 1,100 acre feet a year. And I think it's important to know of that to kind of break down that 1,100 acre feet going forward because it is a challenge going into a drought and having to take this down, but it, really, the system that's there now is, it treats, you know, it's mostly potable water already because the filters cannot treat the secondary water to standards that meet the recycled needs, so it has to be supplemented and mixed with potable water. So currently, of that 1,100 acre feet, 300 acre feet is used in the plant for process works. The project that's going into construction will actually include the ability to take care of all the processed water on-site, which is great. So there's 300 acre feet of that 1,100 acre foot demand. So now we're down to 800 acre feet of demand on the recycled water system. Moving into Valverde Well, this well has been a, has been in the city for quite a while and was put in for a development. The water quality was found to be very poor, and so this well was basically mothballed. However, we're relooking at this well as using it to offset the needs of the recycled water system. This well, it looks like it'll provide about 300 acre feet of water a year. So we're working quickly to get this online for this summer, and with that, that would reduce the recycled water to about 500 acre feet. That's the discrepancy that we're actually talking about with the recycled water system for this coming year, and be online with the tertiary, new tertiary filters for next year, which will be able to meet all of the recycled water demands without having to supplement, which I think is significant. So groundwater projects. We'll be coming soon to council with a on-call services for groundwater support. There are several areas where we envision using that support and being able to move quickly. One is advising us on how to take advantage of our groundwater basin and get the most out of it, prevent saltwater intrusion is part of that. There's different ideas for, you know, monitoring and managing that, also doing some well condition assessment on the wells that we do have. Several of them are, you know, up in age. They're like 20 years old, which is typically the lifespan of most wells, and so taking a look at how best to maximize yields, there are some things you could do to rehabilitate, clean those wells, to get a little bit more out of them, and so these on-call services will be there to help us with that. In addition, they'll be helping us out with a project which was found to be very successful during the 1990s drought, which was drilling silt wells in Gibraltar. Once Gibraltar goes dry, which we anticipate would be late this summer, early fall, we're kind of waiting for this water to clean up a little bit. It's, as you can see, this is actually a recent picture. It's basically chocolate milk. Once the reservoir goes dry, going in and drilling wells that go down into the silt and actually down into the old native historic gravels, and they were able to pull about 700 acre feet of water out of those, out of that basin, once Gibraltar was dry. And so that's a project we'll be looking to get in and have come online possibly late next year. Also, just a heads up...
If I could ask, is there any prospect of actually removing that silt since you're there at the time?
It's a great question. Councilman Dr. Hodgskis has come up before in the past and has looked at. The cost to remove silt is just amazing how expensive it is. I did some quick calculations on it, and to remove an acre foot of silt is approximately 170 truckloads. And so prior to the zacchar fire, Gibraltar's capacity is around 7,000 acre feet. We lost about 2,000 acre feet because of zacchar fire and the silt that came in with the rains after that. So that 2,000 acre feet of silt that came in there to remove that and to haul it to, say, some ranch in San Ynez, we're talking about over $100 million to remove that silt. It's a pretty, and that doesn't get into the permitting that I, I couldn't even fathom how exactly that works. So it has been something that historically we've always looked at, but it's just always been a challenge as to what to do with that silt, where to put it, and I just don't think it's a long-term viable option at this point.
Does anyone want to buy silt? I mean, it's sort of rich, I believe, is it not, or not?
It can be mixed. It depends on what it has in it, you know? I know there's, there's a...
Clay.
I can't say that anyone has ever approached us to purchase it or haul it away or pay us. I think it's, knowing the dirt market, it's one of those things that probably has no value unless you're looking to get rid of it or looking to...
Okay, I must admit, I don't know the dirt market.
So desalination plant. Last time I was here, there was a request to follow up with kind of a timetable, and so I hope to kind of give you a good idea. So we've put out an RFP for preliminary design services. That is, proposals are due March 24th. We had a great turnout at our job walk. Several companies, local and from across the United States, looking to propose on this project. The scope of that preliminary design work is going to look at what our capacity needs are, given the current drought, also revisiting the permitting. On the topic of permitting, I, we have sent off a letter to the California Coastal Commission, and our position is that we do have and kept in good faith our permits to operate this facility, and we are moving forward to do so, and basically have given them a timeline for giving us comments if they have any. And basically have given them a timeline for giving us comments if they have any. We're also working with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, having to do with our discharge permit as well. Technology, I think I'd mentioned last time, we did complete a report in 2009 with an engineering firm, looking at the cost of restarting this facility. Well, that report is now almost five years old, and the technology has changed. And so taking a look at what would be the most efficient, cost-effective solution for our facility here. Also looking at funding options, there's a variety of different ways to approach this. And so they'll be presenting, working on that. Also a revised cost estimate and looking at different construction schedules. This work is anticipated to be complete sometime in August. We should have a final report from them. And so with that, just wanted to show revisiting our current plan, where D-SAL would come online here is in year six, which starts in October of 2016. So following this timeline, because we're moving forward at this point, we feel with a prudent plan to be able to pull the trigger if council decides it's appropriate. In August, we'll have a preliminary look at what all the costs will be, the schedule and everything. Part of that scope is to develop an RFP for a design-build-operate contract, basically is, basically specifications for that. We anticipate putting that out in October and being prepared as early as February for council to decide, say next year is extremely dry, decide to pull the trigger and move forward with D-SAL as early as February of 2015. Now, as far as there's duration of construction, what I did here is, back in the 1990s, the facility was actually built in nine months. I'm sure they paid an acceleration clause to kind of get that going and get it done in nine months. That's fairly quick. And the 16 months is what the Corolo engineers who did this study in 2009, they thought that restarting the plant would take about 16 months. So what I did is I basically looked at where that would put us with a nine-month, if it was decided in February, March of 2015 to move forward with a design-build-operate, that would put us producing recycled water in May of 2016, which is halfway through year five. So we anticipate getting approximately 3,000 acre feet of water out of that, and then being up in full production for all of year six at 7,000 acre feet. So that's our current projections. And again, we'll know more, I think, as we work through this with this engineering firm on restarting the D-SAL. Is there any questions on that before I move on?
Actually, on the D-SAL, there's been a lot of talk about the Montecito Water District. And have we received a proposal from them? They, you know, there was some discussion about whether or not they want to participate in bringing up the D-SAL plant sooner rather than later, but I don't know what details, if any, has come to your office yet.
Madam Mayor, yes, they've acknowledged that they would like to be involved. We met with their staff because we had questions about, well, what are you thinking capacity-wise? What are you? And they said, we agree, you need to know that information. We're going to go back and put something together and send that to you. And so at this point, we're kind of in that phase, waiting for them to let us know what their needs are.
Okay, so you haven't received any official proposal just yet? Okay. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, on the Valverde Well, what's the timeline for bringing that online?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, right now, we're thinking it would come online next in 2015, but that's what we need to get this on-call geotechnical or groundwater firms on board. They would help us, be helping us out with moving that forward.
Okay, so sometime next year?
We're hoping sooner at this point. Like, we've been working kind of internally, we've been working on it, maybe late this fall, really trying to get it on as soon as possible, but, you know--
I'm sure that's true. I just, I can imagine that the treatment is a real issue there, even though it's only going to be used for irrigation purposes, it still is pretty, isn't that part of the discussion is that it's not usable in its current form and needs to get some kind of treatment in order to be even used for irrigation?
Yeah, the preliminary testing we've done, the real issue is going to be the sulfide. So really an odor issue. It's not really a health issue. It's more of an odor issue with the sulfides. And so, you know, if you use a lot of chlorine, you can knock down the sulfides quite a bit. And typically, the recycled water system is used at night. So that may be, it may be something we have to work with, you know, temporarily during this time when the tertiary filters are down.
Great. And then, can you get back to the timeline on the D-SAL, please? There was another chart, there you go. I think that the element there that, of course, is a question, one is, when is the coastal-- and you have a correspondent with coastal commission staff, as I, did you not say? And when are they, when are you asking for them to respond?
We've asked for a response by April 11th.
Okay. So then that's going to be a strong, you'll need a successful, we will need a successful answer, a happy answer from them in order for this timeline to work. Is that right?
That is correct. And, you know, we've tried to lay out in there, it's difficult at this point. We tried to lay out as much as we know about what that project would look like, so that the coastal commission could really provide some comments at this point. The, you know, going into an emerg, I mean, we really have gone through a lot of the permits that we have, and we really do feel like we're in good stance. So, you know, technology has changed. There are things that we're obviously going to need to be upgraded. We will do those consistent with current practices, but there isn't a standard out there for desalinization facilities. And I think that's kind of the challenge. They kind of are making up the rules for each facility that comes along. And so if we're looking to put this facility on as an emergency drought supply, which we've identified for almost 20 years now, I really find it difficult if they are too much of a barrier on this, but, you know--
Well, that'll be obviously a critical point for, to return here. Hopefully, we'll get in our next update, and we're doing this on roughly a monthly basis, that we'll know, we'll start to know some of the answers. And obviously, if we're not getting quite the answers we hoped for, then we'll just need to mobilize more on that. As you say, the emergency permit angle of this would seem to be one that the state would listen to sympathetically. But I do hope that this council will be getting that news and working with that information kind of spot on with that, here we are, kind of on a monthly basis, then that would be a long month from now that we're able to at least mull that answer one more time and be making the next set of decisions on that. Because obviously, as you look out in that year sixteen and seventeen, that is perhaps the key for staying relatively whole. So those are my questions for now, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you. So you're saying, Mr. Hagmark, that there hasn't been enough time passed to know if people are conserving at the 20% level?
Currently, we don't have enough data points to really be able to tell. You know, we got some rain, which usually drives people to use less water. And the question is, is that something they're taking and going to be running with to reduce their water usage? So I do feel it's going to take, it's going to take a good, I think we'll know, we'll know in May from the April, March, and February data whether the messaging has really sunk in with folks.
And I saw Ms. Bjork made a PS, say, is News Channel 3 running that as a free service? Or are they charging us for that commercial, so to speak?
They're charging us for that.
Well, okay. Maybe we can ask them to help us out with that. So the Valverde Well is in the Hidden Valley, then? It's on that Valverde property?
It's right there by Hidden Valley. It's actually in Hidden Valley Park.
Oh, right. I've heard a complaint about the landscaping. So it doesn't produce enough to clean it for drinking purposes? Is that what, it's only 300 acre feet of capacity?
When it was installed, they really struggled to try and treat, I mean, it went for a pretty sophisticated treatment facility there to try and clean it up for that community. And from what I get from Bob Robach, who was there and dealing with the issue at the time, he just said, we tried everything, and the community was just really unhappy with the odor issues. And so basically, we put them on potable water that the rest of the city was, and we just basically mothballed that facility.
Okay. And I'm sorry, what's the capacity of the Corporate Yard Well?
The Corporate Yard Well, which will come on, we're guessing right now, September, October, is pretty significant. It looks like it's going to produce about 1,000 GPM, which is one of our, will be one of our largest producers. That basin is pretty full right now, so we anticipate that production might fall off a little bit as the basin draws down. But the basin right now is absolutely full. It's artesianing, so we're looking forward to getting that.
Really? So, and just to remind me again how much it costs to, we had to, I'm thinking the word remodel, what was it?
Yeah, we did, we had to drill the new well. The well that was there before had basically failed. And so we redrilled the well, and wells typically for the city are about $2 million. It's, they're a pretty significant investment.
That was the investment on getting that water to be drinkable?
Yep.
$2 million, was it? Okay. Thank you.
Please continue. Thank you.
So the other project, which is not something directly being managed by the city, is the cone pumping project. And this is really critical to the whole South Coast community. In April, proposals will be due from contractors. There's three contractors going after this, and their goal is to get a pumping facility online, because in September, they anticipate the level of Kachuma will drop to a point where we can no longer gravity-feed water to the intake structure and through Teca Lodi Tunnel to the South Coast. So impacts Galleta, Montecito, Carpinteria, and the City of Santa Barbara. And so that facility, they're working feverishly on that. The cost currently that they're throwing around are about $3.5 million for the capital, and then approximately $200,000 a month in staffing, electrical costs to operate that facility. The city will pay a portion of that, which is approximately 35%. That's our share of Kachuma costs. And the pumping capacity is still yet defined. It'll be part of their proposals between 36 and 45 MGD. And some of the benefits maybe to doing the larger facility is we could, for the city, take advantage of nighttime pumping when electrical rates are lower. So that's why we asked for the different pumping levels.
MGD, million gallons a day?
Yes.
What does that come out in acre feet? Is that convertible? I don't know.
About three a day, three acre feet a day?
Three acre feet a day?
No. Oh, per million gallons, that's right. So that's a, what, 120 acre feet a day? 90, 100, 100 acre feet a day?
Okay, thank you.
So drought financial impacts, we are still working on this. We have some very rough numbers, but we are working on this, and it includes the capital projects, it includes water purchases, and it includes impacts to operations. We are compiling those for the drought rates right now. And we are also going to be tracking those funds separately in the event that this is declared a federal emergency and we could get possibly some reimbursement. We're also tracking this and following this for other grants and emergency money that's coming through the state. So we'll have more next month, I think more of solid numbers on the actual costs projected. Our next present, I don't want to give too much away, but our next one is about the water rates and moving forward with a conservation rate structure. There are some challenges with that. It's basically trying to make sure that we keep the water fund revenue-neutral going into this, which is challenging. And what we didn't have to deal with during the 90s and do now is Prop 218, which requires a certain level of noticing. And so we're moving as quickly as we can with getting that noticing going so that we can be prepared, prepared to move to a stage two should council decide. So what are stage two drought triggers? And any one of these three can kind of trigger that. Worsening of the water supply projections, needing customers to achieve the 20% if we're not getting the 20% through voluntary requests, needing to move to mandatory with rate structures to incentivize, and/or water expenses are exceeding revenues. And we, the city has been planning for this. We have set aside a rate stabilization fund to help lessen the impact of a drought. I think there's approximately $5 million that has been put in this account, so that when we do go into a situation just like this, we can help shave off some of the impact of the costs of ramping up for a drought, which can be, can be significant. Currently, what we're trying to do is prepare to go to a stage two as early as late May, and that'll be a council decision, but we're preparing to be able to go there. We have received feedback from Water Commission last week, and we're hoping to get some, if you guys have some input today, when Ms. Taylor presents the water rates and recommendations for drought rates. We're hoping to have something to bring before Water Commission and council in April with a proposed recommendation for what those rates will look like. We're shooting to have them go, be effective July 1, which would mean that any water used in June would be under that rate structure. And so that's why we'd like to get, if we go that route, we'd like to do the declaration in late May. So what's different about a stage two? What's the highlights from that? Obviously, a serious water shortage is expected or impending. That's part of a stage two. The big difference from a stage one is drought-based water rates. That's really what we've seen in the past to be the biggest driver for conservation. And so also, we're just going to continue that message. I think I mentioned it before, you know, we have been using the word conservation for so long. What we're asking the community for now is extraordinary conservation. We're looking for things that you normally wouldn't do under normal times. We're looking to do those now to try and meet our 20% goal. And then there are obviously mandatory restrictions on wasting water, washing off hard surfaces, but we have those currently. I think there'll just be a more focus on making sure that's not occurring.
If I could ask, you mentioned kind of unusual things to do. Can you be specific?
Well, I think, you know, letting your lawn die, which is kind of unusual.
Yeah.
That's something we're internally, I'll get to the next slide, we're looking internally, kind of jumping ahead, we're looking internally to delay some capital projects that may, such as our water main projects, which when we replace a water main, you know, we have to dump water when we're cleaning and flushing the lines, and we're looking at delaying that. We're looking at not cleaning our reservoirs this year. We usually, you don't have, you don't have to do it annually, but we do that here. We're looking at delaying that. It's not a huge amount of water, but it's, we're asking people to be extraordinary. We're looking at extraordinary ways internally to get there as well.
So if somebody didn't have a lawn, what would the extraordinary circumstances or methods be? Do we know, or do we want to get into that now?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hockes, there's a range of things, and some of the ones that people did in the past was certainly like using a broom instead of a hose for cleaning any hard surfaces, being very restrictive of how you wash your car, making sure you have a hose-end nozzle and just a bucket if you're washing it at home, or taking it to a car wash where they recycle the water, those types of things. And the list goes on and on.
I mean, we're not talking about taking a shower with a bucket instead of the shower yet, are we? Or are we?
We aren't, no. As a city, we're not. But, and even those things I mentioned, it's really, you know, as the city, as we move into further asking of extraordinary water conservation, we'll start looking at asking those things. But right now, we're really asking, we're really focusing on the outside water use because, but like, as you said, if someone doesn't have outside water use, then those, for example, are things that they could do as well.
Yeah, because I was just trying to think, if somebody wanted to really be, you know, contribute now, what could they do?
Taking shorter showers, you know, all the interior water use things. There are various things like that that people could do inside.
I'd like to hear more about that. I'm sure people would too. Thank you.
And never to pass up an opportunity, we offer a free service to come and do water checkups and help people to identify ways in their home that they can save water. And we've currently increased the staffing to that to try and keep the waitlist to three weeks. We did, we were up there for five weeks for a little bit, but we've got enough staff now that we're able to respond to calls, and we've been getting a lot of calls, which is great. And I will hope people will follow up, because it is a great free service the city provides. I'll have some contact information at the end here of my presentation, but come out to people, whether they're in an apartment-- of my presentation. But come out to people, whether they're in an apartment, or they have a half-acre lot, or an acre lot, we'll come out there with staff and spend some time with you and help you to better understand how your water is currently being used and how you best could approach this drought and being able to, to cut your water usage. So, the conservation workload, we've increased, hopefully you've seen the increase in marketing that's going out there. We've been hitting a lot of our media outlets. We've increased our budget in that manner. We're doing more water checkups. And we are currently updating our water conservation model, which helps, helps to let us know what we can spend money the most wisely to encourage conservation. And one of the things that we're looking at, there are obviously several ways to approach conservation. We're looking for immediate ways to approach conservation. There are also long-term conservation efforts as well. So, in April, we hope to have that model a little more refined, because we're making those updates now and putting some new information in there. And so, we come back in April and give a little more of a presentation on that specific item. As I mentioned a little earlier, our current message was drought on, sprinklers off. Despite the warm weather, there, we've still got a significant amount of rain, and the soil did absorb quite a bit of it. So, you know, this sprinkler should be off for the time being. And of course, following up and good, good practices out there are using mulch to, to keep evapor, evaporation to a minimum. Kind of talked a little bit, a little bit earlier about this, is what we're doing inner-city in a, in a sense of extraordinary conservation. And we've met with parks and we're working with parks and the golf course staff, but they're looking to prioritize what they irrigate. And I thought that's a good step. They're looking to go through, find out what are the most important areas for, where people are recreating, what are the areas that people aren't using as much. And they're looking to reduce their water uses by letting some areas go. And so, that's something that the Parks Department is working actively on, and hopefully we'll have something soon to present. As I mentioned, we're reducing water system flushing program. We are going to do some, but it's going to be very minimal this year because that is a, you know, we're talking about extraordinary. It's not a huge amount of water, but it is, it is some water. And we're also looking to postpone reservoir cleaning. And we're talking about also postponing some capital projects that are water-intensive.
Well, I think there's also a public relations aspect to this. If we're asking everybody to save, they drive down the street and see, we're flushing the streets with some sort of water, they're going to go, what the heck is going on? So, we ought to be more observant than anybody else.
Absolutely. Perception is a big part of it. And, you know, obviously, we want to maintain our water system that meets all primary water quality requirements. And part of that, that's part of where flushing comes in and taking care of our reservoirs. But we certainly feel currently with where we're at that we can forego doing that this year. So, if anybody wants to follow up and find out more information, we definitely would welcome those calls. And we have a lot on our website for people to follow up with.
Thank you. Why don't we go to public comment. Phil Walker, come on up.
I'll, I'll take the podium again as the loyal opposition. Dry throat, I need a glass of water. You know, having worked through, I call it the 1983 to 1991 drought, if you follow the rainfall years, I see similar patterns, but not so similar. And the big difference economically during that time, we worked through the 1979 oil shock, and things were booming in this area, especially by the mid-'80s, toward the later, latter ' '80s and early '90s. I really think the economic impact of what we're doing vis-à-vis water conservation needs to be thought through as far as the economic impact on, especially the landscape industry, the tourism industry. Some thought needs to be put into mitigating these effects, because it will affect a lot of people in the pocketbook. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's to the council. Mr. Hart.
Well, I just really appreciate this information. This is really thorough and very helpful. I very much appreciate the structure that we have, where we're going to come back every month and give an update, because this is obviously very dynamic. I know you were stressed in putting together a staff report because of the timeframe, that you have to have that information ahead to get into the, the regular system. So, having this PowerPoint, you know, in lieu of that, is probably the best you can do. And I, I thank you for doing that. And I especially thank you for meeting with me before the meeting. We talked for about an hour. I got a lot of questions answered, so I don't have as many questions that I would have had otherwise. But just, I think, to highlight a couple of things that I learned in that, in those discussions. I raised last month my interest in really aggressively looking at water conservation and trying to look at some of the best practices that other communities are doing, and start there as to what we might consider here in Santa Barbara. And I, I learned that, that you're working on that. And one of the really important tools for that is the water conservation model, which gives you the ability to predict what would happen to rates based on increasing conservation. It's, obviously, it's a complicated subject. It's not as simple as, we want to conserve as much water as we possibly can, which we do. But there is an impact to that on the rate structure. And the rev, not, not the rate structure, it's the wrong term, the revenue generation from saving water. And that we have a lot of fixed costs in this enterprise fund that we have to cover. So, we have to be careful about all that. And I think that's appropriate and right. And I know that model's going to be available probably in early April. And when it is, you know, testing these best practices and really look really carefully at what we might be able to do much more aggressively, shared a bunch of different ideas with staff that I have about some of the things I think are barriers to expanding the utility of the programs that we do. So, I'm just encouraged. I think that, that what you're doing is exactly right. And I think that in regards to the D-SAL plant, you know, the timeframes fit very well. Councilmember White mentioned too, that, you know, the key milestones, obviously getting a permission from the Coastal Commission to go forward on an emergency basis is one of the big milestones. Working with Montecito, I personally think we ought to be real aggressive with Montecito. I know that you're being very deferential to them in terms of looking for them to tell us what it is they're looking for. I think we ought to take the lead in proposing a partnership with them that works well for our needs. I don't know that they understand our system as well as we do. I don't know that they're in a position to frame this discussion as well as we might for their and our interests. I mean, ultimately, we're not going to do anything as a council that doesn't positively affect our customers and our city residents. But I think there, to me, that feels like there is a big win-win here in terms of the needs, and the assets that we bring into this equation with what they need to do. And I think that the time involved in doing all of that is rapidly slipping away in order to meet their most pressing needs. And I, I don't know that it serves our interests by waiting on them as much as it would, would benefit both parties to, to come to them with a plan and say, this is what we think we can do, and this is how we think you'd do it. This is what it would cost essentially to do it as fast as they needed. So, I throw that out there. Obviously, you know, you want to be careful. This is another entity that deserves respect and consideration and all. But I do think time's wasted. So, I think that's probably enough for today for me. So, thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You had a great buzzworder, Mr. Higmark, about conservation being the cheapest, the cheapest water source. And I remember very, very well in the, the years when people were painting their lawns and, and we had our, you know, tremendous drought situation, that the public responded almost overly well to the situation. And I think we got the message out loud and strong, to the point where neighbors were looking at other neighbors and with a critical eye. And you didn't hose down your driveway, certainly without getting a fair amount of flack. And I, bottom line is, I think, I would encourage staff to do what you're doing, but even to a greater degree in terms of the public messaging beyond the PSAs, even if it involves all the other media outlets, news press on a daily basis, or whatever, you know, the, the water report, reminding people what we have and what we don't have. Because I think that response is very possible. We may be able to get through the bulk of this with public reaction, because of given, given the proper messaging from leadership, I think people are ready to act. I think they're ready to follow through. I think they, and Mr. Hachkis brought it up. I mean, what was, what are the things we can do? And, you know, not everybody's going to look up the website. And not everybody's going to look at it actively. But, but, but as you look at the specter of these horrendous bills we would incur with these other sources, it's going to be very attractive for people to do the right thing. But I think people will do the right thing regardless of the financial implications if given the proper messaging. So, you know, very much support your efforts going forward.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To, at least to start with by following in, in that vein, my recollection of the last drought was that water consumption dropped by some 40 percent? Is that an accurate number for, for what happened in the, the last water crash?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, it was in the 40 to 45 percent range. And, but that, as you may recall, the significant Stage 3 rates were a big part of driving that demand.
True, true. But the point I'm wanting to make there, and I think it dovetails into what Mr. Rouse is saying, is, so, we're, our Stage 2 talks about a 20 percent drop in consumption. And what we saw was possible in a dire emergency was 40-plus percent. So, we have a, we have an ability to go to 25 percent, 26 percent, 27 percent, whatever, a greater number than 20 percent. And the sooner we do that, then we start talking about what you were saying of that saving, that's, that's the water that's going to be the cheapest, will be that water that we save. And if we're able to achieve a 25 percent conservation, that's a chunk extra that we're, that we're having for, for the future. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to, if, if we need to, go in extra, going above that 20 percent, not just having the 20 percent, you know, achieving a stronger benchmark sooner. And that really is kind of the essence of what I've been talking about during this year, is we can, that there's that, a middle ground of still having, hanging on to our trees and being able to do sort of triage irrigation. But we're, we're, we may, we can squeeze 25 percent out of this, 26, 27, whatever. And if that's water, and the sooner we do it, then of course, the, the more water we have going forward and deferring some of these other more expensive options. So, we'll just have to, we'll see, of course, how, how that plays out. I wanted to ask you a little more about the water purchases. I'm not clear exactly where we are now and what, what you see as, as our situation going in the short term forward.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, the, one thing that, if you want to say there's an upside to the price point that water has gotten to, is we're hoping more agencies are going to look to unload water. At this point, we were, have been following up on San Gregorio, which was a, they do a bunch of groundwater banking. And they were looking to just exchange water during wet years. Unfortunately, that this time, their, their board decided to pull that water back. They're not ready to do that just yet. And so, right now, the, the one thing that's on the table is this, this, the north of Delta Water, the Sacramento Valley Water, that's certain we're pursuing. There's approximately 36,000 acre-feet that has been identified for sale. And so, we're working to put together an agreement and an offer on that water. But at this point, we don't have any south-of-Delta water offers just yet. And we're listening, and, and I'm sure there's people that's out there scrambling because at that price point, it doesn't make a lot of sense to farm at 2,200 bucks an acre-foot for water.
That's not terribly encouraging for that, for that piece. Okay. And then, the timeline on the, on the rate structure is next month, or certainly May, we're going to be seeing that, the rate structure study is, okay, I'm, I'm sort of throwing that out there. Clarify for me, or remind me what you've told me already, told us already, on when that, the rate, rate structure, when does that come back to us?
So, Mrs. Taylor will be going into that
Oh, it's the next thing.
In the next presentation. But I can, I can briefly go, we, we, our goal is to get something from the consultant, the first part of April. And so, we can bring that back and, and share that recommendation with council. And you can see where we're headed with that.
We'll be going into the nuts and bolts in that next. But as far as this, it is part of this plan is, and that's, we're looking at that Stage 2 drought declaration, will have the rate structure ready?
Correct. That's what we're looking to implement at July 1.
Okay, all right. And then also the D-SAL, that, obviously, that permit is going to be an inflection point, that question. And we'll have that as part of the, we hope to have that as part of the, the, the Stage 2 piece.
Right. I would, I would assume by the next meeting, we'll, we'll at least know where the Coastal Commission stands on our proposed, what we're proposing to move forward with.
Okay. All right. And then finally, a comment on the, on the silt well. We've lost, we, we lost the ability to use Gibraltar for the last two, three years. I mean, we've used it at very small part of its capacity because of the silt. And that silt well, if there were a decent silt well in place, then we'd be able to use that water, we would have been able to use that, more of that water in the past. So, this may be something to look at as a multi-year solution. I don't know when this Zachafire siltation stops being a problem. It's certainly, it seems it's been a problem longer than I expected it to be. And I expect that others feel the same way. But that silt well may be a way to make midterm uses. I mean, you know, we don't know how our water supply is going to be going here for the next five years, obviously. But having a decent, or not decent, but anyway, a substantial silt well there as part of a, of using Gibraltar water may be something to, to look at as we're going forward. Not just a straw for the, for a year or two, but maybe something a little more substantial than that in order to get decent quality water out of Gibraltar going forward. And obviously, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm grateful that we're having these regular checkups and, and updates, because this is what's uppermost in many people's minds as far as our quality of life here. And these, you know, here we have a beautiful rain, and then we have these spooky weather conditions just coming right behind us as if it's October again. So, we're obviously all going to be looking at this very carefully, month by month. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to address Mr. Hart's comments about Montecito. I was approached by Doug Morgan, my fellow director on the Kachuma Operation and Maintenance Board, I think a month ago, wondering if we had any intention of selling Montecito D-SAL water. I'm sure they're very interested in it, and they need to go through the same process that we go through with this, a staff analysis, staff report, board decision before they move forward. But I'm, I'm quite sure that Montecito is interested in this. It's just a question of at what price and what capacity. So, I'm sure we'll be hearing from them.
Mr. Hachkis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is a silt well only functional after a reservoir is dry?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachkis, no. Actually, the wells that were put in in the '90s were put in to, to be used not only when the reservoir was dry, but also when the reservoir had water in it. As you can see with Gibraltar now and its condition, it's, that, that water has so much suspended silt in it, you know. The investments we've made in Cater, we can treat that water, and we can make it drinkable. But it certainly is very expensive to treat that water. And so, the silt wells could be one way of pre-filtering that water and also taking advantage of that historic gravels that also has water in it. And so, I think it's just another way, I think, long-term, I think Councilmember White's comments were dead-on, and we'll go into this, looking to see if we can't make these silt wells a, a permanent part of our, how we operate Gibraltar.
Might there be a Kachuma silt well also then?
We have brought that up with Combe, and they, we sent them all the information we had on ours so that they can, because I think it is a viable option for, for Kachuma as well.
If I understand it right, if we went to the D-SAL plant, that would be the most expensive water we got. And therefore, by contract, the minute we could get water that we didn't have to get from the D-SAL plant, we would shut the D-SAL plant down. Is that correct?
Well, that, that's going to be a good, a good discussion about what role D-SAL plays and will be, that's a policy-level decision that we'll be looking to, to get feedback on.
If we're, if we're obligated, as I think we should be, to get water as cheaply as we can, then that would be the logical alternative, unfortunately.
If it's, if it's now, if it remains 20 years between droughts, then turning it off is the right answer after the drought is over, you know, once, once our groundwater has been recharged. But if droughts are increasing in frequency, then maybe making it a part of our permanent water portfolio is something we should consider.
Have we looked at the option of, instead of spending any money on a D-SAL plant, just buying increasing amounts of water until the tide turns, as it were?
That's a great point, and that's our current short-term plan. And if it continues and water's available, that could be something we can talk about. You know, I'm kind of, there is a lot of water. In a normal year, there's about, what is it? In a normal year, there's about, what is it, municipality is used about a quarter of the water that lands in California, and the rest is used by agriculture. So there's a significant chunk of water in agriculture. And so, if that balance of moving water into municipals during an emergency occurs, then yes, we can. You know, I think the price for it is expensive. It's more than the operational costs of desal, but if you include the capital cost to build it, then it still, at this point, looks more affordable. And you can turn it off when you're done. You know, you're done, you stop buying.
Right. So that ought to be in the mix somehow when we consider it, I would think. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for that very thorough update, and I think all of my questions were answered from everyone else. Why don't we take a brief break before we get to the final, because I'm looking at the number of slides that looks like will be a little detailed, so, about a 10-minute break. I'm going to call the city council meeting back to order. Okay, if we could read item number 10.
Item 10, Contract for Modeling Services for Drought Water Rates.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Kathy Taylor. I'm the Water System Manager, and I'm here to present the contract for drought water rate modeling services. Staff is recommending that city council authorize the Public Works Director to execute a contract for modeling services for drought water rates in the amount of $36,798 to Raftellus Financial Consultants Incorporated, and approve expenditures up to $10,000 to cover cost increases that may result from necessary change orders for additional unforeseen modeling work by Raftellus. Why are we picking Raftellus? Well, back in 2012, they were selected through a competitive RFP process to perform a 10-year rate plan for the water fund, and currently, the city's water rates reflect Raftellus's rate structure. So considering their recent work on the city's water rates, that we feel that they are the best suited to perform their drought water rate modeling services at this time. What are drought water rates? Well, with no additional water rainfall, the city will likely need to declare a stage two drought condition. So the drought rates, they would go into effect in accordance with Prop 218, and they are intended to incentivize water conservation while ensuring the water fund is revenue-neutral. Triggers for stage two drought, a worsening of the water supply projections, a need of a 20 percent reduction in water use, and also to address financial impacts of drought-related capital projects and water purchases. The drought-related capital projects, Mr. Hagmark went into greater detail in his presentation, so I'll just touch on them again. They pertain to the recycled water system, our groundwater projects, the desalination plant, and the Combe or Kachuma Operations Maintenance Board pumping project. We presented this item to the Water Commission at the regular meeting this month, on March 10, 2014, and we received input from the commissioners on the design of the stage two drought rates and what we should, that feedback we are going to provide the consultant. And for considerations, the commissioners wanted to make sure that we had recovery of all normal costs and extraordinary drought-related costs, and that the recovery, and we were able to recover the costs in a short timeframe, and for them, a short timeframe was about three years. That is, the current concern is, if we let it go out too far, that we might have another drought, that we'd have, or other natural disaster we'd have to find. And also, to consider how to best incentivize water conservation via water rates. So this I wanted to put up for council, just so you can see, water use by customer class, and this is for fiscal year 13, since it's a complete year. Our largest water users is our single-family residential, that's the blue with 47 percent. And then the next is the multifamily residential at 23 percent, followed by commercial at 16, recycled water at 6, and 2 for our industrial users, and then the irrigation users are 3 percent for residential, and then commercial, recreation, and agricultural all use 1 percent. And this is our current, this is a copy of our current water rates, and you know, it has all our classes, and some of the classes have their, you know, we have tier ones, tier twos, and in some cases, tier threes in each class. And I just want to let council know that through the first, through February of fiscal year 14, 51 percent of the water use has been in tier two and tier three. So I agree with comments earlier by Councilmember White, that there is room for conservation, I think. And Water Commission, they supported the general 3 percent across the board increase on water rates that was planned in our water rate fund that we were going to put forward for July 1. But then they looked at specific classes, and in the single-family residential and multifamily residential for drought rates, they also wanted the rate consultant to consider addressing shrinking the tier two rates, I'm sorry, tier two allotments. So as you see, and for single-family, it's the next 1,400 cubic feet, that's what tier two would be, and to shrink that allotment. And then in the multifamily, it was be the, where it says next 400 cubic feet per dwelling, that's the tier two. They also wanted to target the rates for the tier two and then the tier three for drought rates to incentivize water conservation. And then for the commercial, industrial and high-strength commercial, the Water Commissioners were in support of targeting drought rates for the, the rates that are used above, for the water that's used above the 100 percent of the base allotment, so not touching the base allotment rates, but anything above that. And then for the irrigation residential, commercial, and irrigation recreational parks and schools, the feedback from the commission was they wanted to target rates that would incentivize the 20 percent reduction that we're asking for. The irrigation for agriculture, the Water Commission was not in favor of touching that for the stage two declaration. And for the recycled water users, currently, by contract, the use for the, the rates for the recycled water is, it's tagged to the, tied to the irrigation for recreation parks and school, where it's 80 percent of the rate. And historically, by practice, we have always made that the tier one rate. There was, there could be some consideration to possibly give the recycled water a tiered rate, such, similar to the irrigation for the recreation parks similarly, but it would be at 80 percent of that tier. But that's just, you know, that is a thought. But, and then the next, the last one is the outside city limits. It would just be 130 percent of the corresponding in-city rates that whatever that reflected for the, whatever the reflected drought rate would be. So with that, Ms. Jordan, you know, wanted me to add that it is fix a leak week, so, and also to again mention that we have a lot of good information in here. Up on the screen right now is the city's website and phone number for inquiries about water conservation opportunities.
Thank you. I don't have any speaker slips, so it's to the council, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Taylor, so the highest user were the single-family residents by far, so that gives us our greatest potential for conservation, then?
Yes, single-family users, they use 47 percent.
And as we look at this, these disaster rates, I guess, as they're called, is this something that's, when we shift to this rate structure, if we have to shift to this rate structure, is this something that we declare when the drought is over, and we go back to the old rate structure? How does that work? Is this considered just in a special rate structure only, or is it considered?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, yes, it would be during the declaration at the stage two.
Okay, very good. Then so, once we then, we would declare the stage two is over, then we go back to the rate structure? Is that also a Prop 218 issue as well?
For decreasing rates, I don't believe it's a Prop 218.
Okay, thank you.
But I think it's important to clarify, as Ms. Taylor said, and the Water Commission talked about, is we're facing some, what I would call, extraordinary capital cost, even if we don't do the desal plant. And what the Water Commission said is they want to recover those costs over a three-year period, which means you're probably going to have to keep those higher rates, some higher rates in effect over a three-year period. Now, you may want to then change the rates to some other model that, you know, doesn't encourage conservation quite as much, but, you know, if we spend 10, 15 million dollars in capital money over the next two years, just to drill those wells, to do all these things, somehow you have to recover that money. So I don't want you to think, well, if it rains next year, we can go back to the current rates with no financial impact. You're still going to have to, we're going to start incurring some pretty substantial costs pretty soon here. And part of what's going to happen in the next month is we're going to look at the reserves we have in place, you know, our rate stabilization fund, and some other things to find out how we can fill part of that gap with those available monies. But part of the way we're going to have to pay for these extraordinary capital costs is through the rate structure in some way.
Mr. Hart.
So just so I understand, these rates that you're proposing are the drought, stage two drought rates? So what are the prices currently? That would be helpful to understand the change.
Those are, those were, those are the prices.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, these are our current rates, yes.
You don't have the future structure yet. That's what you're going to work on?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
That's what we're voting on, to put that together, right. Mr. Hachkis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the previous slide, or few slides back, said residential irrigation. What is that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachkis, some of our residents have both potable water meters and irrigation meters as well. So the irrigation meter does not have any sewer charges for it, just, it's just for potable water that they put on.
How would one get those, and would that water be used for, how would one get an irrigation meter, for instance?
They would apply for it, and they would have buy-in.
But the rate is therefore lower, correct or not? Yeah, it's slightly lower.
It's higher. It's tier two and tier three.
Oh, it doesn't show there, actually.
It does. It's 516 and 662.
This is where they have a monthly budget, where for, depending on what the weather, it follows the evaporative transpiration rate of the plants, and they have to calculate what their 100 percent budget is. This was something new that we put into the rate, developed in this current year's rates.
So could people take advantage of that now and conserve, and also save money, as it were?
Oh, absolutely, for water conservation.
So about, what I'm saying is, they get, they get more water, but it would cost them less, so more water than if they had just regular residential rates. True or not?
I will defer to Ms. Jordan.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachkis, so the way this works is it's extending the tier two for residential. So if they have a lot, and typically, people that do this, we have 700 irrigation meters, but that includes all of our irrigation meters, both commercial and residential. But a significant majority of those are the residential, so someone with a large landscape, that gives them ability to have more tier two residential water. We, in last July, council adopted the new rate structure, what gives an allocation based on a landscape water budget. So we measure the irrigated area, and then based on that, as the weather changes, they get a certain amount allotment in tier two. Anything over that goes into the tier three.
Is it expensive to get a second meter like that?
Yes, there is a capital buy-in charge that is fairly significant.
Couple thousand bucks, or what, do you know? Anybody know?
It's more than that.
It's in the range of 7,000, 7 to 10,000, it's significant.
Sizable investment. What if somebody has a new addition to the family, young family, suddenly got three members instead of two? It's going to affect their water usage necessarily, but we don't have an allowance for that, do we?
The tier one is based on the average residential indoor water use. So, no, it's an average, it's not based on a certain amount of people. But it's in the range of, you know, three to four people for the single-family tier one, for HCF.
So even a two, excuse me, two-person house gets the advantage of a three to four average, three to four-member average?
Yes, because it's an average. We haven't done it based on allotments, you know, for a certain amount of person, people, or...
Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad that chart's up. That might be useful to mention that in the, I'm picturing the sort of, the rates as having a couple of phases. If we have a couple of more horrible years, I could see rates, the tier three rates going up still more. And I'll just to hearken us back to 30 years or 20 years ago, tier three, which we now have at, above the 14 HCF, it's at 662. In the great drought of 20 years ago, first of all, tier two was, as I recall, either, it might have been either four or six HCF in tier two, and then tier three was at $27 per HCF. So that's, that's the hammer, the sledgehammer, that was put in place 20 years ago. So obviously, we're not looking for that. It's going to be a softer, a kinder, gentler number than that. But at least there will be additional opportunities in the future. Hopefully, we'll just get rain, and we'll be able to return to this wonderful system. But anyway, I'll be really interested to hear what comes out of this study. And meanwhile, I would move that the council authorize the Public Works Director to execute the contract as outlined in staff report.
Okay, so staff A and B moved and seconded. So am I to understand, for tier one, for example, in single-family resident and multifamily and so forth, that the first HCF, first tier, there'll be a 3 percent increase, because that was what was planned anyway? But is the idea behind that to keep it limited to that 3 percent, and then really, the extra increases is in tiers two and three, and there might be differences in what's considered tier two and three?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it was really important to Water Commission that we limit the impacts to the tier one users, because that is, that will be considered health and safety. And so, you know, they talked about it quite a bit, and that they felt the 3 percent was probably the maximum they wanted to impose on the tier one users.
Yeah, and I would agree with that, too, and especially if areas where you don't have landscaping and so forth, I mean, you'd be, you need basic water still, and so if that can really be an incentive to conserve, as opposed to it also being so expensive, that I would, that makes a lot of sense. So, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam. Just a response to Mr. Hachkis's line of questioning. In those irrigation meters, doesn't that include condominium, residential condominium associations, or are those commercial irrigation meters?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, the, those are also, the residential are homeowners associations.
So that's one of the areas where there are irrigation meters, Mr. Hachkis, is in condominium associations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Thank you very much. We move on to Councilmember Committee assignment reports. Ms. Murillo.
Thank you. I attended the Special Olympics basketball tournament at the Thunderdome on Sunday. You were there. We had such a good time, and I congratulate all the Special Olympians. The Moore Mesa Preservation Group had a symposium on all the natural resources out there in that open space, and I certainly support their efforts to preserve Moore Mesa. I attended the Mesa Village meeting, I think you were there, Councilmember Hart, and our traffic engineer, Derek Bailey, was talking about Cliff Drive. Mesa residents crazy about Cliff Drive, and also talking about the roundabout and other traffic issues. We also talked about Upper West Valerio. A young man was hit by a car there, and I was happy to see the speed trailer, is that what that thing is called, where it shows what your, the speed you're driving at, and then it says, you know, slow down to something, you know, less? And so, I'm keeping a good thought for the boy who was hit by the car, and some of the neighbors are talking about doing a neighborhood watch, just to raise awareness and to organize themselves. But what happened was a driver did a dumb thing. A car was stopped, and she went around it. And so, Mr. Bailey is looking at if there's a way to change the streetscape, but really, it was a bad move by a motorist. And so, I don't, you know, the moral of the story, slow down and, you know, don't pass cars when they're stopped. They're stopped for a reason. There was a pedestrian there trying to cross the street. So that was a topic of conversation at the Mesa Village meeting as well. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The monthly meeting, the Downtown Parking Committee, the budget was presented. The downtown parking system is operating in the black in terms of operations, and is still pulling slightly from the reserves for its CIP capital program. A few fees were discussed in terms of lost ticket fees, the commuter, COTA commuter lot monthly permit, as well as the proposed idea of the Louise Lowery monthly parking permits to supplant those who were lost in the Corwin Project. So they will be coming forward with their budget for our normal budget cycle.
Just want to let council know that on behalf of my role on SB CAG as Vice Chair of the Coastal Rail Coordinating Council, which is the rail line basically between LA and San Francisco, part of it doesn't have good train service between San Luis Obispo and Salinas. I and a number of others will be traveling up to Sacramento tomorrow, where our state Senator Hannah Beth Jackson is convening the first state senate rail committee hearing. And this is a new thing for the state senate, I'm very excited, I'm thrilled that our own state senator is chairing this committee, and it's a way for all the different rail corridors, so LoSan, the CRCC, the Capitol Corridor, San Joaquin, and Riverside as well, all coming together with the same message about passenger rail capabilities. So there'll be a special meeting tomorrow, and then between tomorrow and Thursday morning, we'll be meeting with a number of elected representatives up in the state to talk about passenger rail capacity. So I'll give you a report next week. With that, we have a closed session, if you could read that.
Item 11, Conference with Labor Negotiator.
Great, and we will adjourn from closed session. Thank you.